I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Harlingen City Commission which has been duly posted to order. And at this time, I'd like to call upon Pastor Aaron Seitz to lead us in the invitation.
Father, thank you for this opportunity to come and to share in all the things that are going on in our community. Thank you for the gift of our community servants. Thank you for all who have come to voice and to have a part in our city moving forward. We pray your blessings upon all aspects of everything covered in this time together this evening. Father, may you continue moving us forward into the future, that you would prosper us, and that your hand would always be upon this wonderful community that we serve. In your name we pray, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. At least with my pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
If you all will join me in a moment of silence in honor of Lee Means, a longtime community leader, passed away this past Sunday. Thank you. And we're gonna go to welcome everyone and tell you that we're very glad to have all of you here in our meeting. This is a meeting with sort of a new lineup. This is your team for the next two years. And so we're, I think everybody's raring to go and continue to work hard for the city. Item one is the public announcement of events. We have some.
I have an announcement, ma'am. I wanted to announce our new, or introduce to the public, our new convention and visitors bureau director, Mr. Eduardo Figueroa. Mr. Figueroa previously worked for the Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau as vice president of marketing and sales and as a director of convention sales. During his employment at the Brownsville CBB, he participated in trade shows and exhibitions throughout the United States, Mexico, and Canada. And he has extensive hotel management experience in both Mexico and in the United States. We want to welcome Mr. Figueroa.
Welcome Eduardo. Glad to have you on the team here in the city. I hear from the Parks Department about some of our upcoming events.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm working with the Harlingen Commission and Visitors Bureau. And these are a list of our upcoming events. On Sunday, June 9th, Just for Girls Duathlon is going to be held in Harlingen Soccer Complex. On Saturday, June 15th, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., Blues on a Hill. That is going to be with headliner Daddy Matt Blues Band. On June 15th, we'll start the first Family Movie Nights. The movie is called Up Conditional, and that is on the corner of 8th Street and Jackson from 7:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. On Saturday, June 15th, at 8:00 a.m., Footworks is going to be hosting a 5K, 10K, and 1-mile run at the soccer complex. On Saturday, June 27th, hosted by United Way of Northern Cameron County, will be hosting a Day at the Park from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. On Saturday, June 29th, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., a youth and table, a youth and adult table tennis tournament will be held. That is going to be hosted by the Harlingen Table Tennis Club at the Harlingen Community Center. Sorry to cut on that. On Thursday, July 4th and July 5th, we will be hosting, Harlingen will be hosting the First Annual Freedom Test 2013. Our headliner for July 4th is Roger Crager with Brady Honeycutt and Royce Elise. We'll also be having a classic car show. There'll be food and drink vendors there along with other family activities. Then on July 5th, the Old Ema Familia is going to be there along with also fireworks on both days. If you have any questions, you can call us at (423) 544-0000 for that event.
All right. Thank you very much. It's gonna be a busy month. A lot of activities, things to do in Harlingen June. Now we'll go to item two, which is the presentation, proclamation, proclaiming June 213 as National Home Ownership Month. Who's gonna receive this? One of them here. Perhaps there are more of them near you. My grant, so, I'm here. Yeah, thank you all for your service on our CDVG Board and everything that you do there. We have the proclamation, whereas homeownership is the American dream and it is close to the heart of Harlingen. And there's a special power in the neighborhood where most families own their homes. A new homeowner receives a key that does more than unlock a door, gives them a sense of place, where children can grow, learn, and feel safe, and are prepared to save money, and build equity for the future and a sense of stability and belonging to the greater community. And just as we build strong families, homeownership is the building block of strong communities. Whereas thanks to the prosperity that this nation has enjoyed over the past decade, more Americans are homeowners today than at any other time in our history. As mayor, I'm committed to helping more citizens, and I know the city commission is as well, especially those who have been shut out in the past, know the joy of financial security and the sense of community that comes with owning their own home. And whereas the Department of Housing and Urban Development is working in partnership with state and local governments, community groups, and the private sector to make the most effective use of federal funds through combination of housing counseling, down payment assistance, and closing cost assistance. And whereas through funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, we are helping our residents buy homes and live the lives they had once only imagined. And whereas homeownership is good for the empire of Harlingen in our country. It is the American dream, and during National Home Ownership Month, we rededicate ourselves to that dream and to every American who seeks to achieve it. Now therefore, I, Chris Foxwell, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, hereby proclaim the month of June 2013 as National Home Ownership Month in the City of Harlingen, and hereby call upon all citizens in the city to join me in recognizing the importance, providing every citizen with the opportunity to achieve the very dream. I want to thank the CDVG Board and everybody in this committee and board for, you know, bringing these things to our attention and highlighting them as a focus for our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We really appreciate it. We just appreciate everything the city does, and the help of some in our community, providing the housing for our citizens, and especially for our elderly and families. We just can't do it without them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item three is board member recognition. I think it's a new board member. It says, "Parvita Thomas here." Parvita is here. Mary Torres, I know, is here. Mary is going to continue to serve us on our library advisory board. I'll thank you for all that you do as one of our great historians in our community. And we thank you so much for the time that you put in to reminding us of our past and documenting everything we do for our future. So, Mary, thank you so much for serving on this board. And David Ardbryant. So you served on our Convention and Visitors Bureau. And so David and Eduardo will start their tenure with the Harlingen Commissioners and Visitors Bureau tonight. David, thank you so much for all you've been doing for the community. Thanks.
Mayor, I would like to offer a little moment of silence for one board. Board members, Mrs. Ellis, who died and was buried Saturday. She was on two boards here with the city. Mrs. Ellis. I don't know the first name, but Mrs. Doran.
Doran.
Huh? Doran. Ellis died, and she was buried Saturday, and she was on two boards. I think we should have a little moment of silence for her, Jim.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you. Item four is the approval of the minutes of regular meeting of April 17, 2013. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion we approve.
I need to point out that needs to be corrected. I wasn't here for that meeting when it was listed. So I will not vote for or against the minutes. So they should be corrected.
Okay. Well, if any other corrections or additions to the minutes, then do you, we find, who made the motion, accept the minutes?
I'll amend the, accept the minutes as amended.
All right. And second, also, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item five is consent agenda. Is there a motion to consent the agenda?
So, Mayor, is there a petition to consent the agenda?
All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item six, consider taking action pursuant to the Harlingen City Charter, Article 4, Section 6, to elect a mayor pro temp by a majority vote of the city commissioners. This is a part of the charter. Every year we elect the charter. It's just to elect a mayor pro temp to act in place of a mayor during his absence.
Since Danny Castillo over there, number one, is the old man in the seat with the most experience.
By how many months?
So I would like to nominate Danny Castillo.
I'll second that.
All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mayor Tim, Mayor Pro Temp Castillo. I'm gonna, before I go to item seven, I'm gonna move item 17 up and ask whoever's gonna present that item, Ken, or to present item 17.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the Commissioners. Good evening. I'm happy to report that the staff, city manager, myself, and assistant city manager Dan Serna have successfully negotiated a contract with Hafman Associates, which was the firm that came out top-ranked by our Citizens Advisory Committee on the Comprehensive Plan. And it was attached in your information. It was forwarded out to you. And we'd like for you to take action to authorize the city manager to sign the contract with Hafman Associates to get underway on the comprehensive plan.
The other thing we want to point out is it was essentially lower than the budgeted amount, which is booked in for the community, for the city of Harlingen.
And just to explain again what the purpose of this comprehensive plan is and what we hope to accomplish with that.
The comprehensive plan is the, is a document that, it's not an ordinance. It's not a law or something that's set in concrete. It's commonly known as a general plan as well as a comprehensive plan. It's a document that sets forth policies, objectives, and goals in all of the different key areas throughout the city. One of the main things that we focused on here was the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And we actually went before the 4B Board, and they were kind enough to allocate the money for us to be able to fund the comprehensive plan. So out of this, we're gonna get a new complete master plan to go along with a recent needs assessments analysis that Dan Serna and Paul Menzies in the Recreation Department did that'll be part of the comprehensive plan. It's also gonna be updating our land use, which we need to do, which is out of date. We all know about these things that come forward for undesigned zoned areas that came in and got annexed into city a number of years ago. And they're always causing people to have to pay a fee and come in here and ask for zoning. They're gonna be looking at all those, and they're gonna recommend zonings for those so we can implement that, and people won't have to go through that process. We have the transportation thoroughfare plan that's been updated, so we don't really need to concentrate on that. But we're gonna be spending a lot of effort looking at the downtown revitalization, which has been a real important thing. And we've had a lot of good things happen with the Rees and the recent increase in occupancies of businesses down there. But we're gonna be taking a fresh look at that and coming up with stuff there. We look at facilities, public facilities, safety facilities. We know we need another fire station. They're gonna take a look at that. So there's a number of different elements that are in there. And we haven't taken a comprehensive look at all of those key elements that make up the whole comprehensive look at the city. So when we're done, hopefully in another 12 months or so, we'll have a new document that you, as the Commissioners, will be able to pass and adopt that will guide us for the next 10 or 15 years in those different areas. And the real important thing, and one of the main things that came from the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, and one of the special expertise areas of this particular consultant is the community involvement that we're gonna be asking for. We're gonna be reaching out to the community, getting involved in many different ways, using a new thing called MindMixer on the internet. We're gonna be going out to events and hoping we can get out to some of these events that were just announced by the Rec Department and then do some surveys and get information. We're gonna be reaching out to the school kids in the fall and they start to do surveys with them. And we're gonna have lots of several meetings where we invite people to come and talk about those specific topics that I just talked about, to get their input on what they want to see happen here in the city of Harlingen over the next 10, 15, 20 years.
What is the cost of this?
Hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Is it budgeted?
Two hundred thousand, of which some we spent on the thoroughfare plan, but that was a separate.
We were able to do, to create partnerships with the TSTC, and we had some of the students working on different items. And then did the work on the thoroughfare plan. So we were able to do a lot of that work internally to help reduce the cost.
The thoroughfare plan will be incorporated into the comprehensive plan.
Yes, sir. And that doesn't preclude the community and stakeholders. If there's other traffic issues that they feel the need to be addressed, they can bring that out during that process, and we're prepared to work on that.
Now, tonight, we're just gonna be voting on awarding the contract, not the details of how the advisory committee or the other things are gonna work out. That'll be a later vote.
Right.
Yes. Okay. So is there a motion then to approve the, in the order of the contract, approve the contract with Hafman Associates?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Hafman Associates to prepare a new comprehensive plan for the city of Harlingen.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item seven is consider discussing implementation of the strategic plan in the process in the city commission and the community at large. This is just a, this is just a discussion item. Since I thought the comprehensive plan kind of relates to this issue, I wanted to, I wanted to bring that item up and kind of talk about what the comprehensive plan does and what it does not do. I think this is, I think the intent of the comprehensive plan is for it to be, to include quality of life issues like parks and long-range planning. See that, I see the comprehensive plan as more of a long-term, a longer-term blueprint for the city as we map things out, as we plan for zoning, as we plan for parks, as we plan for streets. I included in the agenda packet some of the materials from the Harlingen 100 Plan. Six years ago, we worked together with the community to develop the Harlingen 100 Plan, where we had task forces that met before the community involvement process to brainstorm ideas that were then presented to the community at large two different Saturdays from about 8:00 until 2:00 o'clock in the afternoon. We had a lot of community input that talked about these ideas that were presented. One at an economic development forum and the other one at a quality of life forum. And then there was a tourism summit that happened at the same time. And we sort of incorporated those ideas into the Harlingen 100 Plan, which was eventually adopted. And a remarkable number of goals that were set really have actually been accomplished. A lot of those things are ongoing ideas that we ask to be incorporated. But, you know, strategic planning for Harlingen goes back a long way. So we've done it in a lot of different kinds of ways. Back in 1963, there was a HUD study that was commissioned that was done that developed, put together a bunch of great ideas and themes that we're still talking about today. Back in 1963, they talked about, you know, thoroughfares not being beautified and entryways to the cities not being beautified, and there not being an intention to beautifying the community. And so that's a theme that goes back to 1963. And then back in about late 19, about 2005, I think we did the Harlingen First Plan, which was a plan that we paid somebody, you know, about a hundred thousand dollars to come up with. And the themes in that dealt with place, identifying place as a theme for our community. How do we create a place, a place that people will remember? We followed those with this Harlingen 100 Plan, which, again, put together a series of goals for us. We've done, you know, we've done strategic planning in other ways. We've had the city commission just sit down and say, let's develop, you know, a set of goals for the next year or two years. I know Mayor Carr, when he was mayor, about every five years, he would gather the different boards together, and they would have a day-long kind of planning process where everybody put, you know, had ideas. So there are different ways to do this, and I think that there are, that there are some opportunities, especially since we're going to be working to develop this comprehensive plan over the next year. But, and there may be some things that we want to fast-track or, you know, create as goals for the commission that might be on a shorter timeframe. And I've sort of put together a little outline of a possible way to do this, but I really wanted to have your, your input on what you, how you think we should go about doing this. But one simple way would simply be to go through Harlingen 100 and look at the things that maybe we want to re, that we want to reestablish as goals that maybe didn't get done, or things that we established as ongoing, things that we want to keep working on. The Economic Development Corporation was talking last week about developing their own strategic plan. I think we could ask them to go forward with that and perhaps ask some of the other boards like Waterworks, the airport, parks in downtown, which could be participating in the comprehensive plan anyway. And then we're gonna be having some public forums. But perhaps what we've put together maybe focuses on more of a shorter timeframe, a three- to five-year horizon for all the non-comprehensive plan goals of the commission, EDC, and Waterworks. But I think planning is an important thing. I think because we're gonna be doing the comprehensive, comprehensive plan, we're gonna be having a framework for this. I think there's some other ideas that we can incorporate and look at doing on a shorter timeframe. So I did want to just kind of lay that out for you as what we've done in the past and different ways we've done it, and ask you how you all would like to see this, see us proceed with developing some goals for this commission for the city over the next few years.
Well, I think it'd be a good exercise to go back to the Harlingen 100 Plan and just look at all of the things that we have accomplished. Like I'm looking at one that says, "Redevelop heritage manor." I'd say we knocked that one out of the park with the Rees. And, and because there's some things that are on that list that we still want to accomplish. Start there and then use that as sort of a blueprint for where we want to go.
A discussion I've had with Carlos was exactly what, we're talking about a short term rather than a real long term, something that we can have goals for the next year. You know, you had your four talking points, and we should interweave those talking points into what our, our goals are. So we're all working on the same type of focus. And then, like you said, get the other departments to bring their end to the table so that they can dovetail into what we would like to do.
I think the basic framework is there. I think it's a good framework. And I think when we look down on the list of all the different areas, like tourism and healthcare, as stated by the other Commissioners, there's a lot of stuff we've already accomplished towards very well on its way to being accomplished. We've made some really good progress as a city. So I think the framework's already there. It's a good framework. I think it's just updating and identifying what those short-term goals are versus the long-term, term goals like Victor had stated. These eight, eight points here, I think we've just talked about the new person to head up our CBB. And we really need to get involved in the CBB as well in this, since one strong component is tourism. And aside from that, I think it's a great plan. I think it's something that we have, we have something to go forward with. It's already there. We do reinvent that.
So where do we go from here?
What if we, would you all be, would you, would you be up for, you know, for a Saturday morning?
A weekend camp?
Well, not so much. Maybe not, maybe not a retreat, because Emma has to come with us. I'm sure, you know, we've got, you know, boys and girls accommodations or whatever. But maybe a Saturday morning where we kind of review some of these things that we've talked about more in detail, where we give it, you know, a good three hours or so and have a lunch or something. And then the public will be there and kind of refine then what we want and how we want to go forward. And maybe through that discussion process, we come up with, well, we want the Economic Development Corporation to work on it. We want to see what they've, they've got proposed. They want to assign certain tasks to like the CBB or the EDC and that kind of thing. Is that, we have the staff do some preparation for that meeting so that we're not completely flying blind. And maybe do that mid to late summer, maybe after we get through the hard part of the budget process.
I agree.
I agree. It is a good idea, work together with the airport, the EDC, and all those boards. Work together with them.
You know, and we've mentioned a few of the boards here, but I think the intent, and obviously by the whole commission, is to involve all of our boards, if at all possible. I think there's, there's an extensive amount of experience and expertise. That's why we've assigned these people to various boards. And where appropriate, I think it'd be good to really involve them on the front end. And as we're looking, getting a fresh pair of eyes on it, let's get their, their input as well. And I think that is the intent of what we're gonna do.
You know, I wrote this, and I left off with Harlingen proud and the beautification efforts. And, you know, that's something I was focused on. I just, just was kind of putting this together as an idea, as a basis for, to talk about.
As a suggestion, though, I think that maybe if we wanted to maximize the public participation and if we might want to wait until September if we're not in too big a hurry. It's just pretty hard to get people out on a Saturday during the summer to want to come to something like this, where it might be easier in September or October to get.
That works for me. It gives the staff a little bit longer to help lay some innovation. All right. Well, Mr. Moore, you have something, comment you want to make?
Yes, Jerry Morris, 709 Town Hall. Yeah, in reference to your community at large and requesting input, I just wanted to request that the commission consider things that are sweeping through the country. Many cities now are already looking at reducing or eliminating RF radiation from cell towers. And it needs to be included in the plan objectives as to whether or not there needs to be areas, safe areas, in the communities, parks, recreation, plant life, that are not going to be affected by the future growth of cell towers and all the RF radiation factors that are being inundated all around a lot of the communities. Just for your information, there are several cases headed for the Supreme Court right now that are hopefully gonna arrest the issue and reduce the amount of radiation levels permitted within the cities that are a serious health effect for some people. Thank you. permitted within the cities that are a serious health effect for some people, thank you.
All right. Okay, well then, I'll just ask the staff to maybe work up a framework and revisit this issue in another meeting.
Yes.
Next meeting or the meeting after that. Okay, very good. And let's go to item eight, which is consider and take action to approve our resolution to acceptance of Valley International Airport's mid-year capital budget for fiscal year 2012, 2013.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Terry Chase, I'm the Director of Finance at the airport, and I'm here to present our mid-year budget update for your approval. I'm going to go over on a high-level basis changes to, net changes to operating revenue, operating expenses, the resulting impact to net income before depreciation expense, as well as our capital expense and capital improvement budget. The airport is now forecasting that operating revenue will decrease by $96,000. That result will be a new operating revenue budget of $6,621,900. We have a slight increase in operating expenses of $27,650, which resulted in a new operating expense budget of $5,708,250. The result of these two changes will reduce my net income by before depreciation by $123,650. It is now budgeted to be $913,250. Overall, the capital expense and capital improvement budget remains unchanged from the original budget, is still at $7,145,000. I know you received a lot more detail in your budget package, if you have any questions related to those, I'd be happy to answer the questions you might have.
The projected income is negative, or down 96?
Yeah.
And to what does that contribute to?
We just, I had to go out for bids on the rent-a-car companies, and we had one of the rent-a-car company's budget did not submit a bid. They are moved off-premise, and that has got to result in the majority of that decrease. In addition to that, when we negotiated the rent-a-car company's rents back in 2008, they were substantially higher because of the traffic at the airport. Since then, most of these rent-a-car companies have taken a substantial hit to their bottom line, and we actually expected a major increase, a decrease, but not quite as much as what we actually received in the bids.
All right. Anything, any other questions for Terry? Is there a motion to approve the resolution to accept the mid-year capital budget?
So, Mayor.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Terry. Item nine, consider and take action to approve an ordinance on first reading to repeal section 32.006, certain board meeting times, branch code ordinances.
Mayor and City Commission, we wanted to bring this to the, to the City Commission. Staff has received feedback from several advisory board and committee members regarding the options of having flexible times for their meetings. And in certain instances, the lack of having that flexible time has caused a lack of core for some of those boards. And we wanted to have this before the commission to allow them to have flexible meeting times.
So you're saying currently, things are carved in stone?
The current ordinance asks that they meet at the 5:30.
So in some cases, they have to meet, if they, some meet in the morning, one month, and then at 5:30 on the alternate month, and it's caused some problems. And then some other boards were just not able to make forums, because they used to meet at noon and now they're having to meet at 5:30. And because of people that work, they can meet at noon, but they, they're having a hard time meeting at 5:30.
That'd be good for the people that don't do that, or do something that don't have time in the morning, or maybe that have school.
Well, unless the people that are actually doing the work on these boards need, when they feel like it's convenient for them to get together to do the work, since we're asking them to volunteer their time, makes sense to me to let them decide when to meet. Rick, can you read the caption?
An ordinance to City Harlingen, Texas, repealing section 32.006, certain board meeting times. On chapter 32 of the Harlingen City Code is amended to allow for greater participation by the public and board member volunteers by having flexible meeting times, providing a savings clause, providing a severability clause, and ordaining other matters pertaining to the program.
Is there a motion to present the ordinance on first reading?
I have a motion.
Motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll second it here. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. opposed, motion carries. Item 10, is a public hearing to consider the one-year action plan for fiscal year 2013, 14, year 39, community development block grant, CDG program, fiscal year 2013, 14, year 19, home investments partnerships program. And we're delighted to welcome back Tammy McDan, who's rejoined our staff. She just couldn't stay away from having so much fun here at the City of Harlingen. We're glad to have you back.
Thank you. It's good to be back. Really good. Those are board members. I pay them.
They're happy.
In your agenda packet, I provided you a detailed executive summary that detailed what we do with CDG funds. And it sort of touches on what you were just talking about previously. We do a consolidated plan that has a lot of the components, and we talk about parks and infrastructure needs. So we asked for a one-year extension this year. So by the time your plan rolls out for the planning, it will really help me in doing the plan that I need to do for HUD. The Community Development Advisory Board is volunteers with all our boards. They meet several times, review the applications for funding, go over, look at the criteria, does it meet the priority that have already been established? And each of the applications are scored based on how they respond, and I gave you a copy of the summary of the evaluations. Based on the advisory board's recommendations for this year's CDG home funding are as follows. For the swimming pool improvements at Long Island Park, $168,500. Street improvements citywide within low to moderate income areas, $223,774. For the senior companion program, $18,000. Boys and Girls Club, $40,000. Girl Scouts, $6,825. Sunshine Haven, $9,000. Easter Seals, which is a new program to be funded this year, $8,000. And then we have the housing rehab program, $95,000. The rehab administration, $85,000. And general admin, $165,700. For the affordable housing program that is funding through Harlingen Community Development Corporation, they do the down payment assistance and also the new construction of affordable housing, $202,875. Administrative support, $22,500. And then we also are anticipating program income from the housing rehab loans that we receive each year, and that is anticipated to be $60,168, which will go back into assisting other persons. This is a public hearing, so we'll open that up and talk about it.
I have a question. What is Sunshine Haven?
Sunshine Haven is a place where you go when you return early.
A hospice?
Yes. It's an almito. But the funding is set aside, although it's located in Harlingen, it has to go to low-income residents of Harlingen that are going there.
And then housing rehab, what's involved with that?
That, we have about a three-year waiting list. It's for owner occupied housing rehab programs, so primarily elderly, disabled, large families will go in and bring their home up to code. And it's either zero or a 3% interest loan, depending on their income. If they're extremely low, it's zero interest. It's also for the elderly to grant, and it's deferred over three or five years.
And you mentioned a few things, if you could cover them again, on affordable housing program.
The affordable housing is for the construction of new housing, so it's interim construction. Also down payment assistance to put affordable, a person that is of income eligibility into the home. And when they do that, they also look at your income to debt ratios, and they have to go to the home buyer counseling also to make sure that they're getting into it, they know what it is, and they learn how to budget.
I have a question. When you were, when you did the synopsis, you had 10 different people that y'all interviewed, and I noticed that somebody got ranked, but they didn't get necessarily the money. Is that because you try and spread it based on youth health?
Well, we have the high priorities that we have to meet that we established in the consolidated plan. And then in addition to that, they'll also look at if an agency may have scored well in the application, but they were previously funded with us and we monitored them and they have outstanding findings, and they haven't cleared those up, then they're not eligible for funding until they clear those up.
Got you. And this is federal money that's coming? And I asked this question last year, the trend is less and less each year?
Actually, there's a chart that I provided to you. We've lost over half a million dollars in the last 10 years.
Okay. I'm going to go to item A, which is a public hearing, open and public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against the one-year action plan budget? Yes, ma'am. If you'd come forward and state your name and your residence address.
Good afternoon, Mayor. My name is Ophelia Rivera. I am from Brownsville, Texas, and I am here representing CASA of Cameron and Willacy Counties. And we are one of the agencies that are not on the list. That's why I'm here. And with me is Berta Gera. She's the board president of CASA. It's a surprise to me that we're not on the list.
We service, how many people from Harlingen? Six, roundabout number, I don't have it memorized, about 67 children in Harlingen that are abused and neglected and are in, currently in foster care system. And last year, how much they was, $32,500 to pay for a caseworker specifically to work in the city of Harlingen. We're based in Brownsville, but they work for the kids in Harlingen.
And basically, we have been funded before. We thank the commission and everybody here in Harlingen that has funded us before. We appreciate it very much, but we want you to reconsider our request for funds. And I know that if these are hard times and everybody's budgets are getting cut, and I could understand perhaps a cut, we're asking for you all to fund one of our positions. It's for a caseworker. And this caseworker does nothing else than service the children in Harlingen that are in the foster care system. It will hurt us very much not to be able to have funds to serve these children, so please reconsider this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against the one-year action plan?
For the record, I was Senator Junior, Twent Road, and it's in the road. I'm neither for or against, because I have a problem with the street improvements area. I don't know what exactly streets are designated as part of the fixing up. I don't think the street I'm about to mention is part of the fixing up. I reside on Morris Road in Commissioner Mesmore's area. I've asked him twice to look into the potholes. Dan Sager is aware of the condition of the street. When we annexed in 1996, half of technically the roadway belongs to the county, which is of then Commissioner T. Valencia. The other half belongs to the city. Well, currently, there's 48 potholes, and every time I drive down that street, it's a narrow street, it's a bad street, and I, I forgot about Mesmore, and I decided to go with the street crew, and I still can't get no one out there. So that street eventually will need to be maintained in a certain professional manner, which is blacktop and be put on the list of things to do, because I don't think there's any other street in Harlingen that has that condition, other than outside the limits of Harlingen and recent annex areas. It's a horrible street and it's a widely used road.
Is Morris Road in the area that can be serviced by the, Morris Road isn't, isn't in, it isn't in the?
By CDG funds?
Yeah, yeah. Those funds can only be used in a certain designated area of the city.
Census tracks are 51% low to moderate income.
Right. So, while we appreciate your concern about Morris Road, it's, the comment really doesn't apply to speaking for or against the plan, because the streets involved in the plan are in the census tracks that don't.
Or low-income areas. So if we were to have low-income area, would it be designated as a low-income area? It would qualify, am I correct?
We don't make the rules. The federal government makes the rules about.
No, I understand, Mayor, but I'm asking if it were to be designated as a low-income area?
Actually, it's based on the area that you're serving. However, if there's an area that needs to have a public infrastructure improvement, and you look at it and it looks to be low, then you can do surveys and actually get documentation door by door for everybody that would benefit to assist that area.
It's completely surrounded by low-income areas. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against the budget?
I would. I noticed that, my name is Alana Schopf at 258, this one was, and I was just wondering, Lowson Fish is not there. Last time, I believe that they were not funded because they, they didn't have the proper paperwork. Then all of a sudden, in January, February, looking at the expenses on the internet, it said that they were funded $21,500, which was not approved by the City Commission. I was just wondering, well, how did they get the money if before they didn't get the money? And all of a sudden, in January, February, you think that $21,500? I don't know how that works. So, since.
Well, that's not really about this budget.
Oh, it's not this budget, I'm sorry. But I was just wondering, because Mr. Diaz on the budget is there.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for, or against, or against?
Well, I'm for what's there, except for that CASA that didn't get anything, which they serve as the advantage of the children.
Is there, all right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schopf. You can sit down now, or just, is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against the one-year action plan budget?
Well, I want to say that I'm.
Please sit down.
For that, but I'm against it, because CASA didn't get any money.
Okay, that's fine.
So, are they going to get any?
That's fine. You made your statement. All right. Is anyone else who'd like to speak for or against the one-year action plan budget? All right. Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is consider and take action to approve the one-year action plan budget for fiscal year 2013, 14, year 39, community development block grant, CDG program, fiscal year 2013, 14, year 19, home investment partnership program.
I'll make a motion that we accept this budget as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one question on the issue with CASA. I know, Tammy, you go through a very stringent process of trying to make the most you can out of available funding. And you rate everybody across the board with the same set of rules, same set of standards, and at some point, you have to make a decision based on that criteria. And you guys have gone through that whole process. I know sometimes it's a very painful process, because these are a lot of very real needs within the community, but you only have so much money to go so far. And I get, it's a rhetorical question, but you guys already did all of that homework. Unfortunately, there are some people that don't get the funding that, I mean, they're very well-deserving of it, but I'm confident you guys have gone through that process and it's not an easy process, but I appreciate your efforts.
We appreciate what CASA does for the community, and it's great, and it's a fine organization, but we do have a volunteer board that has painstakingly gone through this, these allocations, and this is their recommendation. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. opposed, like a sign of, motion carries. All right. Thank you again. Thank you to the CDG Board and members for all you do to, it's a lot of work to go through all of these applications and make these decisions. They're difficult ones. All right. I have filed a abstention, David's, on items 11 and 13. I ask that, after I step out of the room, the mayor first can take out item 11 and 13, and then let me know when you're done, and I'll be back. thirteen, and then let me know when you're done, and I'll be back.
I'm going to go to item number eleven, public hearing. We consider a ordinance of first reading for a specific use permit to allow a school in a residential, single-family, R1 district located at the corner of Rio Honda Road and Twenths Street, bearing the legal description of block one, block two, HCISB, Middle School Number Five subdivision, applicant, in the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, and Commissioners. This is a crest for a special use permit for the School of Health Professions. It's in a R1, single-family residential area, and the use permits required in that particular zoning district. This is a school project that's very important to the school district and also will be a very important asset for the city of Harlingen, considering the thriving healthcare industry that we have here. This was before the Planning and Zoning Commission in early May at their regular meeting. At that time, there were a number of residents and property owners from the area that came to the public hearing and expressed some concerns. The main concern was about traffic problems because Memorial School opened there last year, and traffic problems came out of that, and they were concerned that if another school's going to be built, what was being done to address those concerns? After some discussion, the planning commission voted to table that and instructed the staff to go back and work with the school district and have some meetings and come back with some proposed alternatives, different solutions, to try to address those issues that came up from the public, at the public hearing. We did have a meeting with the traffic engineer that did the report for the school district the following morning, and then we subsequently had a meeting with the school staff, and also we had a meeting with the superintendent and the school staff to address this. And yesterday, the city manager, myself, the city engineer, and Dan Serna, the assistant city manager, went to the school district's facilities meeting to talk about this issue. We were on the agenda, and that was a good meeting, and I think we've got a good collaboration and an understanding going on between the city and the school district with regard to the concern that the citizens have brought up. The second meeting, we held a special meeting because we know that they're on a tight timeline to try to get the school built and ready to open next school year in 2014. So the consultant who's here this evening, Mr. Albert Adanya, from Adanya Traffic Engineering, came and made a presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission of his findings and explained and answered questions for them. If you look at the site plan, can you move forward there for me, Charlie? This is an outline of where the school is in the yellow, and there you can see where the project site, this is off of Rio Honda, Twenty-First, and near Morgan. The Memorial School, which is constructed, is over on the left. The yellow is the proposed health school. And actually, I think you've got Albert's stuff on there instead of the stuff from the staff. Yeah, you want to go? So, and one of the things that came up, and Mr. Oscar, you can see, there's the middle school, the proposed school on the right, and then if you go to the next slide, this is the surrounding zoning, which majority of it's R1, single-family, and there's some multi, which is the lighter brown, and then there's some general retail. And then on the next slide, it shows the subdivision that took place to create those two parcels. And then on the next slide, that's the first floor plan, and then the next slide is the second floor plan of the actual school facility itself. And then the site plan is on the next slide. And if you look here, you can see how the school's going to sit there, the parking and how the circulation's proposed to work. You see Morgan Boulevard over here and...
Is Morgan on the top?
Morgan on the top.
He's on the west on this.
On the right, that's correct. Everything on these site plans, the north is always pointing up, so. And then you see Twenty-Fourth Street over on the far left. The concern that came up was that there's a lot of traffic that's gathering at Rio Honda and Thirteenth at the peak hours, particularly in the afternoon. And I'll let the consultant, Mr. Adanya, address that, and he's going to show you a presentation on that. But where it says buses only up there at the top left-hand corner, one of the things that Mr. Tapatia, who works for the school district, he got up in the last meeting and he said that they discussed it with their staff and that they agreed that they would open that up to traffic to better help the circulation. And we also had agreement to talk about a possible traffic light at the intersection of Thirteenth and Rio Honda, which we did a study on, and we just got the results back that it actually, at this stage of the game, doesn't really warrant putting a traffic signal in there. But the other thing that's been a hot topic of discussion is Twenty-First Street was built up to the edge of the property line, and it doesn't go all the way on out to Morgan. And in fact, the city engineer recommended putting a barrier there because it's only thirteen feet wide, and we don't want to have accidents and traffic coming in.
Twenty-First Street goes all the way to Vincent, I'm not Morgan.
Yeah, Vincent does not go to Morgan now. That's, that was the big concern, is why doesn't it go to Morgan and why can't the traffic go all the way out there now? So the other issue that came up, is not really related to the construction of this particular school project, was the people who came were concerned about the sewer. During rain events in particular, they said that sometimes the sewer comes up out of manholes, and there's one property owner that expressed concern about sewer gas and stuff thrown off on his property. So we did have a discussion with Daryl Gunn from Harlingen Water Works, who's here this evening, and Jim Valley, who's in charge of his sewer department. And Daryl's going to come up when I'm done and help address some of those issues that came up at the last meeting. But, and then after him, Mr. Adanya's going to make the presentation to show you the traffic study that they did and the things that they recommended. And then we should have the public hearing because I believe a number of the property owners and residents that were at these previous meetings are here to tell you about their concerns. So if you've got any questions for me right now, I'll be happy to address them. Otherwise, if we can allow Mr. Gunn to come up and address the questions that came up on the sewer issues.
Thank you. As Ken said, he reports, there was concern at the planning and zoning meeting regarding the sewer system in the area. After evaluating it, the sewer system in the area is no different than most other systems that we have. Harlingen is a little unique in the industry. Most cities our size will have very few lift stations. When I came here a few years ago, we had eighty-four lift stations in Harlingen. Harlingen was allowed to develop as, every little subdivision or development was allowed to put a lift station onto another station, but a lift station pumped to another station. As an example, most cities that have relief or elevation change design gravity systems, and the systems go and follow the terrain and flow to their treatment system by gravity, and there's a little pumping. Here, when I first came here, we were spending more money pumping sewer than pumping water, which is unconscionable. And we've attacked that program over the last several years with SAV's help, but we've now gone from eighty-four lift stations down to sixty-five by installing gravity lines where we can. The reason I'm getting into that is that with the lift station system that we have, it's totally dependent on the power grid and power. Power outages, lift stations fail, and there are anomalies. In this area, have we had some issues in the past? Yes. A few years back, we were getting an extensive amount of fiber in this particular lift station that services this area, and in turn, results is it was just massive, massive amounts of adult diapers that were clogging the pumps. About a year and a half ago, we went in with some exotic pumps that actually now grind up and mulch up this fiber's material and passes it. So in the past year and a half, we haven't had nearly the same type of issue. However, Harlingen being as flat as it is, same elevation everywhere, it floods. And when we have, the system is flooded, rainwater does get in the sanitary sewer system. It's not unique to this location. It's citywide. So I guess the bottom line is, the design of the lift station, the design of the collection system in this area has more than adequate capacity for the school and for future growth. Is there going to be, continue to be some issues in the future? And flood events and power outages? Yes. I mean, it's just the nature of the business. And so most of the problems that we have historically, that we have noted, were due to those types of events. So I'd be happy to answer any question, Ken.
So the existing, you're saying, existing infrastructure is adequate enough to handle new load?
Yeah. As an example, most stations, again, since a hundred percent of this flow has to be pumped to another station, to another station, so. Your runtime, or the amount of time that a way to evaluate or measure is how many hours a day do your pumps run? We have stations that run almost twenty-four hours a day. This particular station runs three to four hours a day. There's adequate capacity in the system. It's for additional, for growth and for additional load. That doesn't mean there's not going to be an issue in the future with power outages or floods, with rainwater overwhelming the system. Because by the ABAA and TCUQ rules, no stormwater is to enter the sanitary sewer system. However, when you have yards flooded and you have cleanouts to the sanitary system there, it's this human nature to open a cleanup out and to drain your yard into the sewer system.
Well, it was ninety, I never thought of that one.
Oh, it happens, we can show you hundreds, if not thousands, of cases where that happened. And we have cases where people innocently will put rain gutters and downspouts off their home and work to run it, and oh, there's a cleanout or a system there and tie it into it, innocently, and it goes straight into the sanitary sewer system. Those things happen, we know it. So therefore, that's why our flows will, our plant flows will double in a major rain event, just because that does get into the system. And so it's just the nature of the business.
Daryl, one of the other concerns, sort of, I guess it's associated with the point that you made, was also a lot of the residents are along Rio Honda Road and complaining. I think you've received those complaints before, as far as that smell?
Yes, over.
Is that attributed to the same issue you're talking about?
Well, we have over complaints all throughout the city, depending on wind conditions and the amount of age of wastewater that's being held into our lift station wet wells. Again, getting back to the system of major gravity lines, cities and systems who have principally gravity systems, all the sewer gases in the pipes is vented out the rooftops and is dispersed over a very, very large area. In our case, what we take is, we take the sewage, we encapsulate it in a force main where it came in, we put it into the next lift station down the system, and all that gas is emitted right there. And so, yes, it can be extremely omnivorous at times, particularly in hot summertime where we have this sewage and this pipe cooking, and suddenly it's released into an open atmosphere and vented in the lift station wet well. It can be spirit, yes. And that's the nature of, you know, the system we have, because we have so many lift stations that will not vent, because the, when the pumps are off, it's the wastewater is just setting in the force main, which is not vented. And that's, but then again, that's the nature of the system. And we're going to continue to evaluate the system and try to make improvements to it and get down to a reasonable number of lift stations. You know, examples, the city of Dallas has fourteen lift stations. We have sixty-five. I think McAllen has thirty-four. We have sixty-five. The entire city of Houston has four hundred, and at one time, we had eighty-five. That's just the way that we evolved over a number of years, and it's not going to be fixed overnight. But getting back to the issue at hand, what impact will the school have to the system? And I'm biting my tongue, say that, I'll pay you back fees, but I won't say that. What impact they'll have on the system and flows is, the capacity is there?
That lift, where is the lift station that serves that neighborhood?
It's right there in front of, on Rio Honda Road, right in front of the new middle school.
In front of the middle school? And that lift station pumps?
East.
Because, I mean, well, what I'm saying is, you're very close to your treatment station at this point.
No, no, we're quite a ways to, it's pumped a couple more times before it gets to, I think it's pumped one more time before it gets to the wastewater treatment plant out on Harrison.
On Harrison. That's what I'm saying, so that was my question, is it go to one, two, three lift stations? One more lift station?
Yeah, I think it's one more.
And then you monitor how often the motor runs, so you know it runs like three hours a day?
Yes, sir.
So the rest of the time, it's collecting?
Yeah. When the pumps are off, the wet well, you can't, you don't want the pumps running, it has nothing to pump, so the pumps will evacuate the wet well to the reservoir, and so then it sets and fills up. And as it's filling up, it's sitting there, yes, sir.
Well, the more times it fills up, the more often you force the main and...
Yes.
...charge the system, so to speak.
Correct.
So do you expect that to happen? Like, right now, you say it's running three hours a day. Will it run four hours a day, or?
I doubt that often. Again, the schools of this nature really don't use as much water. We wish they did. We wish they used a lot more, but they don't really use that much water.
I know what I was going to ask you, that's where I was going with it. So this goes to one more lift station, but is another lift station dumping into this one?
We, yes, sir, there is. But let me, we also are designing the system where there's flexibility and where we can route to various locations. In the past, we didn't have that option. Staff has come up with that idea, and I commend, you know, Jim Valon for that, that he has the flexibility now. If there is an issue or a particular problem at one station, he can divert flow to another station. And we didn't have that flexibility in the past, but we do now. Not everywhere, but in certain locations.
In an east location?
Yes, I think, yeah. This one, we, but we did, we do have one that goes into this one.
One goes into it? Do we keep records on how often the power goes out in these various areas? I mean, does this, the power go out in this one more often maybe than it does in other places, or it's about the same?
It's about the same. And we have...
Have we had more power outages recently when we've had all this?
We have portable generators if we think there's going to be an extended power outage, but we don't have near the generators for sixty-five stations, if there is a massive, maybe a massive outage.
Any other questions for answering my questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. I'm going to ask Mr. Adanya to come up and give you the presentation, the traffic study that was done for the school. And then the use permit was recommended unanimously forward by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their special meeting on May the twentieth. Mr. Adanya?
Good afternoon, Mayor Proton and Commissioners. I'm Albert Adanya with Adanya Engineering and Traffic Design out of West Circle, here to give you a brief summary of the study that we performed, the study that we performed for the proposed Health School of Health Professions, which is, as we've been talking about, adjacent to Memorial School. The purpose of the study was to determine the impacts of the traffic to be generated by the school. What we did is we looked at the size of the school, the number of students that will be attended, and make an estimation based on some traffic procedures, estimated procedures, to determine how much traffic will be generated. We compared that to locally here to some things, there were other traffic studies that we've done for similar schools, similar projects, and came up with estimation of the total by the school. What we did is we looked at the at the size of the school, the number of students that will be attended, and make an estimation based on some traffic procedures, estimated procedures, to determine how much traffic will be generated. We compared that to locally here to some things that were other traffic studies that we've done for similar schools, similar projects, and came up with estimation of the total trips that are generated. Then what we did is we actually put those trips into the existing roadway infrastructure, you know, Rio Ondo, 21st, Morgan, 13th Street, those intersections, to try to determine, you know, how, what the impact will be on those on those roads. So we've done an extensive amount of data collection because that is, as traffic engineers ask, what we use to determine, to get a sense of what's happening on those roads. We collected traffic volumes. We observed the traffic. We collected also video inventories to kind of help us, you know, understand and analyze what is actually happening. Some of the problems that were happening initially, I think at Memorial, were more related, and now as we've understood exactly what has happened, more related to initially people not knowing where the traffic needed to go. Traffic needed to circulate in a certain way, and there were traffic entering at the wrong locations. And so they created a lot of confusion. Once after the first week, second week, people got into the normal routines and they were able to establish their typical patterns and they settled in very nicely. We expect the same thing here. Traffic will be initially, the first couple of weeks, will be significant because people don't know exactly where the access points are. And so we does expect the same similar thing to happen here once this school opens. However, the infrastructure is in place. For example, Rio Ondo is a 48-foot roadway that has enough capacity to be able to handle significant amount, significantly more traffic than it personally carries. We've done multiple data collections that kind of established the existing number of cars that are there and also they helped us determine what is the maximum we can put in there. Right now, we're not even at half of the capacity of the road. I think we're using 25% of the total capacity. So we get plenty of room to be able to work with. If we do need to expand at some point where we feel now we need to provide better flow along Rio Ondo, the road is sufficiently wide to be able to accommodate two lanes in each direction. We should be able to accommodate traffic for the next 10 years for sure. Oh, we've also looked at Morgan. Morgan does not carry a lot of traffic right now. It is a very nice facility, two lanes in each direction with a continuous to a left turn lane. So we expect buses to be arriving to the project site using Morgan. And of course, there will be some students that will be driving to the school. This school, this academy is basically going to have students from eighth grade all the way to 12th grade. It's a total of 500, 550 maximum students that will be at the school. So it's not a very large as compared to some other schools that are similar to this one. So Morgan should easily handle all the traffic suspected there. What we've seen is the majority of the traffic is coming from the west. And if we take a look at the overall area, then we realize that, yeah, a lot of the traffic is coming, excuse me, oops, where is that? Okay, here we go. A lot of the traffic is coming from the southwest, from the west. So in here, the majority of the traffic we expected along 13th Street. And that's where the traffic is. As you can see here to the north, there really isn't much. So existing, a lot of the traffic is using 13th. We see a lot of traffic at 13th and at the corner of 13th and, excuse me, Rio Ondo. And so right now, this is a very larger area that kind of just meant to show the overall where the where the development is, where the housing is. And as our counts dictated, right here, 13th Street is where the majority of the traffic is coming from. Very low traffic volumes here compared to Morgan, even though it is a very nice facility with five lanes of traffic, much more, a lot more capacity than any other roads. One of the particular points that was mentioned is the need for the extension of 21st Street. We looked at that very carefully. And one of the things that we've realized is that really that most of the traffic will not be using, even if we were to construct that tomorrow and have that road in place before the storm. We anticipate the majority of the traffic is still coming via 13th and Rio Ondo from the west. We see that with our counts. We've done both close to Morgan and both all the way to the intersection also at 13th Street.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but how can you make that assumption?
It's not an assumption. We see it already with the traffic. We've done counts both near Morgan and also at 13th Street. So the majority of the traffic is already doing, is already coming from 13th Street. Also, if you look at this area here, we see that all the traffic, and that's what the counts are saying, that all the traffic is coming, you know, up from the west, coming along 13th Street back to Memorial. We expect, once this opens up, this is going to be a citywide school, it's going to generate traffic citywide. Still, as you look at the whole area, we still anticipate more traffic from the west than from any other direction.
I guess I'm trying to find that, follow that rationale, but I'm just asking questions at this point. But the fact that some of the traffic counts may be a little lower in some of the other, let's say on Vincent or off of Morgan, typically, traffic patterns end up being dictated by either by force of habit or looking for the path of least
Path of least assistance, exactly.
And you see that around around Marshall, around the high school, where they end up trying to cut across through those smaller little feeder streets to try to avoid going to 7th and 77. If that 21st Street was extended to Vincent Road, would that help the traffic flow?
We believe it very, very little impact.
But would it?
We wouldn't gain too much by providing that. I don't, we, at this point, we don't feel that like if you were to do a benefit to cost analysis ratio on that, we don't feel that the benefits would be there to justify the expenses. This would be an expensive endeavor to acquire right of way to be able to extend that road all the way to even Loop 499 or just or just Vincent itself, just the acquisition of right of way, relocation of utilities. If you were to look at a benefit to cost ratio to that, the cost is just too high compared to the benefit. That is because your traffic's not going to be there. Your highest traffic is still on 13th and Rio Ondo. That's where the biggest impact is going to be.
So it wouldn't help to have that extension of 21st Street to Rio Honda Road?
I still think that in our opinion, that it is very good planning. And as we indicated, we did a study, the comprehensive, excuse me, the Thorford Plan Study that we did for the city, we indicated that that road should be extended all the way, actually, all the way to Loop 499. But does this, does this particular project, does this particular traffic that will be generated have an impact such that it that it requires this improvement? In our opinion, no. We've done all the analysis. We've done all the, all the car estimations. And right now, in our opinion, it's not needed. It is very good planning, though, to begin to plan. And still, that project, it takes some time. Planning should begin already to extend that road all the way to Loop 499.
Did the traffic between Loop 499 going southbound on 13th increase any in your study?
No, as a matter of fact, it is one of the lowest of all the, if you were to look at the intersection, all the lanes, and we have, we did a traffic study, and that was the lowest car volumes that we experienced in the southbound direction.
When did y'all do the traffic study? The counts?
The counts were done, there were multiple counts done. Some were done March, this March of 2013. And then most recently, we did the traffic study there at 13th and Rio Ondo and looking at evaluating the need for a traffic signal there. And that was just done May the 30th. So it was just
In March, with school in session, when you did the traffic?
Yes, school was in session. Yes. That's one of the things that we make sure. And this traffic warn study that we did on May 30th, that was the second to the last day of school, so school was still in session.
Questions? Is another lane needed along Morgan or the other street to handle the traffic?
Morgan, right now, the buses would be traveling in a, in a northbound direction.
On Morgan?
And there's two lanes in the northbound and also a continuous two-way left turn lane. So buses and, and students that would be driving to school would basically enter through Morgan, but they would have that continuous two-way left turn lane to get out of the way, make a left turn into the school that's located on the, on the north side of the property. So they would be, you know, at the safest situation along Morgan.
Okay, so 550 students, buses, faculty and administration, you're looking at, what, 700 vehicles in a half hour time spot?
We have a trip generation that actually shows that and the media show that right here. If you can see here, our trip generations for the middle school, we split it up into the middle school and high school. And so we have, on average, weekday summary here in and out, going in and out of the school in a total daily count. That would be a total daily count of 1,229, that's estimated. In the AM, we expect 190 in and 103 out for a total of 294. That's in the AM. In the PM, it's a little bit less, it's 246. So those, these, this table basically summarizes the information here.
And that's including buses?
That's including buses.
Seems to be a small number.
I was going to say, how many students? It's 550 students just at the high school. How many do you expect ride the bus?
We expect, I think we were told approximately seven buses would be, excuse me, is that correct, Oscar? Six, six buses.
Six times four.
How many cars are we going to eliminate by using six buses?
You'd probably eliminate
Are there 40 people on the bus?
Yeah, approximately 40 people, so times six.
250, 240. I want to ask you a question. I'm going to get off the topic from what he has, but I live on the west side. And so in your opinion, if I drive a certain way, I'm going to return the same way?
If you're, especially with the way the, the driveways are set up, that is our opinion, yes. In this particular case, you will be driving with
I drove it today and it just drove it the way I would have normally driven it, taking my son to school, and I would have taken 13th. And I've had conversations with other people about why don't I go exactly one block further and then take 77 and then take Morgan? It's just creature of habit. I've got to cut across in front of those two schools and across the mall and then on down 13th in front of the high school. It's just creature of habit. And so you're answering my, I wanted to know why I knew that. You're saying it's because we returned the same way we go.
Yes.
So you're looking at 500 vehicles a day, more or less. Those vehicles have to go slow. It's a school zone.
Yeah, there's a
They're going to be turning left and turning right. Isn't that a traffic jam with the other school next door to it?
There is a school next to it. Actually, traffic flows pretty, we have videos that we've taken and we've seen ourselves, the traffic flows smoothly.
But in traffic, one and one is not two, but at one and one is 3.5 or four when people start slowing down.
I didn't follow that question.
Okay. That's two cars.
Yes.
If these two cars slowed down to 20 miles an hour or less, one wants to make a left, this one wants to go right. Driving in front of a school during the rush hour is sometimes hell for someone trying to get through it because traffic's backed up.
Yeah. Well, that's why we have those school zones. I mean, those schools slow everybody down, provide a little better gaps to be able to turn in. And sometimes, you know, there are some vehicles
Right, which gets to me then. Shouldn't there be a turning lane or parking lanes on the sides of the streets in order to handle that and to allow continual traffic to flow through instead of everybody getting plugged up?
Yeah, in this particular case along Rio Ondo, I think that's what you're talking about, right? Rio Ondo, as you're coming in
Any other access point?
Either from the east or the west, you do have, if you're coming from the west, you do have a continuous two-way left turn lane. So the traffic that's turning left gets to turn into their dedicated left to be able to turn left into 21st Street and access the Memorial Middle School.
Then the other thing is this is near an intersection, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so that people are slowing down and backing up and plugged in order to hang rights and lefts, then that's going to mess up the traffic flow out on the highway with the red light, correct?
Not in this, you're talking about 21st Street? There's enough distance between 21st and Morgan. There is, we did not observe any backup onto Morgan.
Right, you didn't observe it, but you're adding another 500 vehicles a day.
Yeah.
That's unobservable at this point.
And a lot of those vehicles, as I mentioned, will be coming from the west. So they will not create a problem onto Morgan.
Will it create a problem towards the west?
The other direction, we do have a continuous two-way left turn lane that allows for the left turners to get out of the way for through traffic to continue to flow. If there is the need, that road actually is wide enough, 46 to 48 feet wide, they could be actually widened to or restripped within the existing width to accommodate up to four lanes of traffic. So potentially, you could double your, your, your capacity to be able to move traffic up and down the road as necessary. When you look at the overall picture of where you put a school, this is the place you would want to put it. As compared to, say, putting it on an archery or, say, Means Elementary that's located on the loop, we have those issues where the traffic actually queues on the Loop 499. In this particular case, we're accommodating all the traffic within the school, not even within 21st Street, which has very little traffic at all. All the traffic there is because of the school. Even then, all the traffic that's going to be queued is queued internally. There's enough queuing, looping space to be able to put in those cars and for them to queue up in there and not create problems.
Wants people to be hanging, wants they're trained to know where to go.
Yeah, initially, there has to be a training and we hope that the school will get, at the beginning of the school year, get with the parents in advance as they register, maybe inform the students and parents about the traffic flow and where they're supposed to go for parents driving off, for those that are driving, and that type of situation so that creates less opportunity for chaos.
So we need to start working and what, what we're going to do to resolve that problem, right?
Yeah, especially informing the, the parents. I mean, that's a big, big part of it. If we want to avoid that rush or that, those issues that normally happen the first or second week of school, I mean, right now is the time to begin letting those parents know how we propose to flow traffic up and down Rio Ondo and 21st Street.
I spent about four months hanging around in front of schools with the sign. I observed, that's truth, I observed lots and lots of near misses. And when I was in retail and we had to report something, we even had to report near misses because we had to know about safety. Has there been any thought about when they're leaving 21st, they must take a right? Because what happens is invariably, there's somebody on this street wants to make a left across traffic that's trying to turn left, and they jump out there and they're so focused on the person that wants to turn in that they jump out in front of somebody else coming. Do you follow what I'm saying? Because this right lane is closest to them. But they're watching across the street. And so they jump out. And I watched that in front of Stewart Place Elementary. We have two exits side by side at Stewart Place. And you'll have somebody in the right exit wanting to make a left in front of somebody leaving the left exit and turning right. So they do this.
Oh, yeah.
And so my observation is, as a traffic engineer in the school district, when y'all start talking about this one artery, 21st Street, because I just drove out there, I can understand the thought process. I can understand all of this traffic coming from the west. But what I can't understand is, is are we going to do anything to try and that training process that you talked about? We've got to think about those, the people that aren't going to want to be trained. They're going to one turn the wrong way and all of a sudden, what Michael is talking about, we're going to start backing people because they're going to sit there with their blinking light on and everybody behind them is backed up.
Yeah, one of the things that was also looked at is the north, let me see if I can go back to the diagram here that shows, in here, if there is car backing up in here for, as you're saying, in here creating issues.
Correct.
I mean, we do have this drive that is up here that I think the school has already indicated that this is going to be left open for traffic flow up and down as necessary here. It originally was meant to be used for buses and for students coming in and parking in this area. But now it may be used for, it will be open throughout the day to alleviate traffic. So there is an opportunity there for traffic to flow as, you know, as traffic may pile up in here, may queue up in here, there will be opportunities for traffic to flow up in here and back to Morgan.
So for those that want to go east, they can go off the back way. For those that want to go west, they'll, they'll leave, make a right and leave.
Yes.
What are going to be, I understand we're going to have staggered hours. What are the staggered hours?
That's another thing that also helps the overall flow of things, traffic there. The school, the elementary and middle school, this is a practice of the hardening of the The school, the elementary and middle school, this is a practice that the Harlingen C I S has already had for a while, uh, in which they stagger the hours, they, they, they start school and also the release time. And that kinda helps traffic flow, because as you know, fifteen, thirty minutes, uh, usually that's the time window for traffic to arrive and to go, and if you stagger even fifteen, twenty minutes, that really helps a lot of the traffic to, to flow quicker out of there before the next round.
What are those times, do you know, or does somebody, there's a thirty-minute gap? Okay, that's what I wanted to know. So it just makes the existing situation you have last about an hour, instead of a half an hour? Right?
Yeah.
You're just spreading, you're just doubling the problem that you have now. When I look at that diagram, and I talked a little bit to staff about it, you know, it's that access that goes back to the east, back over to Morgan Boulevard at the top end there that's important. That allows people an additional way out, and they can turn right on Morgan, because Morgan is maybe the most underutilized big street in the entire city of Harlingen, is it's huge and nobody's on it. So if they came in, or if they were to come in off of Morgan or go out via Morgan, that provides a huge relief to this Rio Hondo Road problem, whether they're coming or going. And they would, I'm one of those people that would rather drive ten minutes than sit five. I'll go around the obstruction rather than sit there and tap on my steering wheel. So I could be trained to go up to Morgan Boulevard, come in and then flow right back out onto Morgan, even if it took me a little bit more distance to do it. But that to me is the key to, because that left, you say everybody's coming from, uh, the west, well, they're gonna wanna turn left off of Rio Hondo Road into the site, right?
Yes.
And then you get them in there and they come back out through the school, and then they turn right and leave, but it's that turning left that causes the problem, because there're gonna be people to figure out that if I come from the east and I'm driving west, I don't have to wait to turn left, I'll just turn right from in there. So I'm the guy that would go down Morgan Boulevard in front of A G B and come in and just turn right and go in. If you get double that problem, I, I foresee that happening, people will start to come other ways, just like Danny said, around the high school, uh, they figure out ways to try to cut through those streets, usually it results in a bad idea, because you can't get across, uh, but out of frustration, they'll try it.
What about one-way streets? You're in the complex and you're out the complex. Have you thought about that?
Uh, which one?
Uh, your choice, you're the engineer.
Yeah, no, the one-way, one-way street, we will limit our capacity, we will limit, we would create ourselves actually problems, we're trying to create one-way, especially this, these roads are very nice, uh, it would be a bad, uh, waste of, of such large facilities to then designate it as one-way when we have traffic that needs to go in, in both ways.
You already have Twenty-first Street going up the, running up the west side of that property, it's already nice and big and wide. If you were gonna spend any money, to me it would be to make the access point out to Morgan the same width and size as Twenty-first Street is now. That is to say, you would take the money that you already have dedicated for that bus entrance that was just supposed to be during school hours and for buses only, you would take that and use that to offset the cost of making that the same width as Twenty-first Street and have it go out to Morgan, and that would let people come in and go out from Morgan, let buses come in and go out, and then also down onto Rio Hondo Road. That would give you a loop around that whole proj- that whole project.
What is the, the proposed width right now of that ingress, egress point?
Starts off, it's narrow.
It varies in here, I think it, it goes all the way up to thirty-six feet here, and then in here, I'm not sure, twenty...
It narrows down.
Yeah, it narrows down internally here, but as it approaches intersection, it provides a, a left turn, uh, you know, enough room to accommodate a left turn and a right turn.
What is the width of the Twenty-first Street extension?
Thirty-seven feet right here.
Thirty-seven?
Yeah.
All the way through?
Uh, all the way to here, yes.
But one other observation I wanted to, to make, I know when you, you mentioned the comprehensive study that, that you updated for the city. I remember we had that discussion and that point was brought up about that very issue, that Twenty-first Street extension, and the fact that we would need to really strongly consider making that all the way to Vincent, and then ultimately, depending on the development of that whole area that currently is just fields, uh, would possibly extend all the way to the Loop. My concern is that we shortchange ourselves, now I'm talking not just the school district, but the city and the whole area that's gonna be impacted by, that's already been impacted by the growth, very good growth, very much needed growth, but we need to make sure that on the front end that we develop the appropriate level of infrastructure, so that we don't come back a year later, five years later, and realize through a harsh lesson that we underdeveloped the infrastructure to, to service that development that we have. And this is a significant amount of additional traffic, I mean, that's, you, you, you know, right now, we're just having your presentation, but we're gonna get to the public hearing where you can have some, some residents from that area that have certainly been talking to city staff and the elected officials, myself included. And I sort of questioned that, because I know when we, when we had the discussion with you, making your presentation to us in our comprehensive plan, you agreed that there was gonna have to be some, some considerations, and you talked about the fact of the existing school and the need for that extension of Twenty-first Street. My understanding is that you agree with that, and I, I don't remember if you actually updated the designation of Vincent and, and the Twenty-first Street issue and the consideration for that. And I just wanna make sure that we as an elected body don't make a decision right now that'll shortchange us in the very near future. This is a great opportunity for us right now to partner with the school district to make sure we do it right. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, and we're gonna hear some other discussion during the, the, the public hearing point. Unfortunately, I'm not gonna have a vote, since, thanks to y'all electing me as a mayor of town, so. I don't have a vote in this, but I, I wanted to make sure I put that point out there, because, uh, I know I've heard from the residents that live all around there, and I live very close to there as well, so every day I see the level of traffic. Traffic counts is one thing that are taken through like little snapshots, but there's people that live there twenty-four seven.
These are twenty-four hour volume counts throughout the whole day.
And all that really counts for people that live there is from seven thirty, or seven to eight thirty, because that's when the school kids are there and that's when they're there, the rest of the day.
Right, some days, pretty...
The point is that we need to make sure that we develop enough appropriate infrastructure in there to make sure that we do it right on the front end. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I do. How wide, you know, a- as you presented this, and I started thinking about it, and I, I never considered the volume from the west because of where it sits in the northeast. So I have to agree with you, but I have a couple of concerns. That street, the very, very top that connects Twenty-first to, um, Morgan, that's not a dedicated street at this point.
No.
So that's gonna be, that's gonna be a dedicated street, or is that gonna continue as school property?
Uh, it still continues as a, as a school property.
So how wide is that thoroughfare gonna be?
Uh, it's gonna be twenty-eight feet in, uh, here, and as it gets, uh, out to the intersection, it's gonna be thirty, thirty-six or thirty-seven feet.
My, my, my question is, is why can't we make that, or why can't the school make that as wide as a dedicated street so that we, we can resolve a couple of things? Number one, that little loop that you talked about is wonderful, you're gonna have, but you're gonna have buses coming at the same time that people are gonna be wanting to go out. And so you, now you're gonna have a new, unique thing, because those buses are not small, and they're gonna stack up.
Those are only six buses and they don't arrive at the same time.
I, I understand that, and I'm just think, I'm thinking like what Danny's saying, out to the future, that'll become somebody's crosscut. People will discover that, and that'll become like a dedicated street, because you're gonna leave it open.
During the school hours.
Only during school hours?
Only during school hours.
And then you put a bar across the highway?
I brought the day, and we close out the school.
With a barrier?
Okay. That's great until you have to pick up your kid at ten o'clock from a field trip.
Right, right.
Or, or the buses park, or, and then, you know, you pull in and you don't realize there's a bar there. Guys, my thought is, if you just spend a little bit and widen that up, have it prepared, because at some point in time, I mean, that, that is a very nice thoroughfare that you've got there, and, and that does alleviate Twenty-first immediately today. Now, four years from now, three years from now, we can address that, but I can see this flow, but I, I don't understand this twenty-eight feet and buses and cars, because the original, I, I remember the original proposal on that little cut was buses only, and that's what, that's why you have it at twenty-eight feet.
Yeah, but even twenty-eight feet can, uh, even if you go twenty-eight to thirty-two right now, for example, this is thirty-seven, but it, it's, it's nowhere striped like three lanes or anything like that, it's unstriped, and it's still one lane restriction basically.
I live one block from south, okay? And I have to go up mid-lane to go home, and I don't go home at three o'clock, three thirty, okay? Because those kids are leaving that parking lot, and I always get that left turn kid in front of me, he's gonna turn left in front of me, and I got a four-way stop to go home, and that's a twenty-minute bumper to bumper to go home, because everybody's going, you know, I, I, it's back to standing in front of Stewart Place Elementary, why don't we have a, a sign that says you can only turn right? And so that's my question, that twenty-eight foot, if you made it a little wider, it could accommodate three lanes.
Yeah, but the, the issue is that you will carry whatever number here, but the, the restriction will be right here, you'll have to come to, to stop either way here.
Either one.
Yeah.
Either one, just thinking of the third lane.
Any other questions for so, I hope. Thank you. Thank you. Ken, was there anybody else that, from staff or anybody who's gonna make any presentations before we open the public hearing?
Is there someone from school to ask questions?
Thank you, Mayor Brokaw, I'm the City Commissioner, I'm Officer Dobey, Assistant Superintendent for Harlingen C I S D, and also with me is Julio Calas, Assistant Superintendent for Business for H C I S D. We're here, here on behalf of the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Steve Floyds. Uh, the, the question about the school, uh, it, it is an academy, uh, there's no football teams, there's no band, uh, it's certainly an academy, if you wanna go to extraviral activity, you, you're gonna have to go to the two high schools. Uh, this is, uh, eighth through twelfth, so after school, you would go to school or be bused to, to the other high school, so there's no late night games, football games, anything happening after, after hours. So we have, uh, working on a planned district-wide to secure all our schools, especially with the shootings that we've had at Columbine, Sandy Hook, Connecticut, uh, to secure all our schools, all our parking lots, all our driveways, um, first perimeter and then the school, actually, the main perimeter to get into the school and so forth, the basic safety plan we've put together. So when we first went to planning zone commission, we were, we have the, the drive to get out to, to Morgan, uh, with gates, after school's in, we close it. Uh, school's gonna be out, we open them, we secure our campuses, we also have a lot of vandalism and thefts at our, at our schools at nights, and so we're trying to protect them. Uh, but because of the issue of the traffic, to try to get traffic off Twenty-first Street, I went, went back to our staff and we decided, we'll leave it open early in the morning, so that everyone on Twenty-first Street that wants to come out towards Twenty-Fifth Street can do so, if they wanna avoid the traffic on, on Rio Hondo. And we'll leave it out, open throughout the day, that was a commitment we made to the Planning Zone Commission. And when school's out, there's no more activity, there's no more traffic or buses or anybody working late, the night, night custodians we have, we'll close it, could be six, seven, eight o'clock at night, depending what activities are happening. Uh, so we need to secure our site at night, it's a private drive, it won't be a city street. Uh, in the future, if more traffic develops in Twenty-first Street, the long-term city plan is to open up Twenty-first Street all the way to Vincent, that'll handle the future growth. Uh, the traffic that we have on Twenty-first, if you really think about it, is only school district traffic, there, there's no other reason to go down that street, there's no mall, there's no stripes, there's no Seven-Eleven, it's strictly school district traffic. So if you're not, when school's out, there's nobody gonna be entering there, it's gonna be a dead, it's a deadened street, so it's only school district traffic. So once our school drop off kids, you leave, that street's dead, there's nobody, there's no reason to go through there. Same thing at, at night after school, you don't see anybody in that street. Uh, so that's why we feel we can close it and it's not even a difference, you're not gonna go down Twenty-first Street anyway, just to come back out. Uh, Morgan, it doesn't go, go through, so in the future, anyone in the city using that to try to get up to Vincent or the Loop to head out to the expressway, that's, they'll use that versus going to Morgan and, and head north, so, um, this, this school also is a, an academy citywide, it's not zoned to that neighborhood only, so if you live, if you live, live in the west part of Har- Harlingen, south side, north side, and you've been accepted to, to come to this school, we're gonna have traffic from west, east, north, south, and we expect a lot of people go through Morgan, through the Loop, come around and, and through Morgan. So it's not like the Memorial Middle School, that it's zoned, so only the people in that zone, just immediately west where all those houses are, that's where all that traffic comes to, because you're zoned, you have no choice but to, to go there. This school's gonna work very, very different. So I just wanted to explain some of those things.
And again, this is a five hundred and fifty capacity school, our intent is to start it out with the eighth and ninth graders, year one, which is about two hundred and fifty students, add a hundred and twenty-five students every year thereafter, until four years from now, we'll be fully five hundred and fifty capacity campus.
And of course, only the juniors and seniors can drive, but by that time, they'll be doing clinical rotations at hospitals and clinics, so they'll be there half a day, then they'll be at the doctor's offices or hospitals the other half of the day, so that's even less traffic that'll come, come to the school.
So we anticipate as far as students driving, maybe about, you know, two hundred students driving, and then probably about sixty staff members that would probably be taking their vehicles, and the other individual students are probably busing us there.
Initially, when you, when y'all designed the, um, that stretch in question right now, which is the twenty-eight foot wide section that's behind the new academy, between a Rio Hondo, behind a, between Morgan and Twenty-first Street, that little stretch?
Right.
The initial design, the, the width and so forth of that, of that segment there was designed for no through traffic, correct? It was engineered like that?
Yes, it was designed to take, well, buses, and, and there's some teachers, depending on what side of the building you work on, there'll be some teacher, I would say about forty percent of the teacher would park on that side and sixty percent on the other side. Again, it's not a very big school, so we don't have a lot of teachers, but we would have students that do drive, and we always try to separate the parent drop off, if they wanna drop off your kid, and you can come into Morgan, go there, Twenty-first Street, drop off your kid and go back out towards Morgan, and never touch Rio Hondo, uh, so that was the idea, but after school was in, once, once our school's in, you don't see any traffic, then we lock all our gates. Uh, that's the, was the intent of the design.
Right, but the initial design was to just have buses only, and then the students and teachers have to go in there?
No, it was buses, students and teachers, all to use that drive.
We just saw a drawing that said buses only.
Right. Well, that's, I don't know if I have that in the drawing, but the, the, in our initial design, that's, that's, all our schools work that way. It's just not buses, because the students gotta go to that parking lot too, and so the teachers, so that's the attempt. And also, standard driveways are normally twenty-two feet wide, and that's, a lot of our schools are designed that way, but in a lot of our recent meetings with the fire department, because of the, the fire department trucks and so forth, they prefer twenty-eight for their, for, for their fire engines, so we decided to go to twenty-eight feet wide to accommodate fire truck traffic. So it's larger than, than normal for a private drive.
Sidewalks?
Yes, we have sidewalks.
Sidewalks, you paying for sidewalks?
When we built the street on Twenty-first Street, we already put in sidewalks, so they're, they're there already. And again, nobody's gonna walk, uh, there's, there's no houses on the east side, and most of the people from the product city are, are bringing their kids, themselves are being bused. If you live five miles away, you know, you're not gonna walk.
Any other questions, Commissioner? Thank you. At this point, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Any person who has anything to speak for against society, please step up and identify yourself.
Good evening, my name's Yolanda Shoff, and when they say, well, it sounds too good to be true, it probably isn't, this is a total nightmare, a total nightmare, the way the presentation was, I can tell you. I'd like to see anything that could be to go on a bus. I mean, they have to do internship, I'd like to see them go on a bus, the bus is gonna haul them over there to do their internship wherever it's gonna be, to take five kids, then the congested traffic, and you're gonna say that the citizen tax crews and industry will just are gonna put their life on hold while the school is open, and then they're gonna do a lot of their business at night? That is a total nightmare, a total nightmare.
Anybody else want to speak for and answer society?
Um, I'm Ed Harvey, I live on Rio Hondo Road, and I'm in, uh...
Would you please, gonna give the address, please, for your...
I'll give it. I'm Ed. I'm Edwin Harley, and I live at 1920 Rio Honda Road, which is directly across from the Memorial Middle School. I'm here not to have any problem with the school that they're talking about, but I am here to encourage the school district and the city to work to open 21st Street. Discussing the opening of 21st Street all the way to Vincent Road would relieve a lot of traffic, because the people that have children, that take them to Memorial, would love to come down Vincent Road, there's no traffic there at all, and come into the school from the north. We have emergency vehicles that travel to the nursing homes down Rio Honda Road. Matter of fact, just today, there's two of them. We need to have an additional way of getting in and out of those schools, especially if we have an emergency. It's very difficult when traffic comes down from Morgan Boulevard, for these people to be in the turn lane, which is your center lane, to go up into the 21st Street at the present time. The traffic really backs up. I know it's only an inconvenience for maybe 45 minutes to an hour, but it still would relieve a lot of problems if we got 21st Street put in. That's basically what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's John Taker, I live at 17 on Rio Honda Road. First, I'd like to compliment you guys on thinking this through and looking at it as a futuristic thing, because it will be a nightmare if you don't plan properly, because the existing infrastructure is taxed, to say the least. Just a few comments. I live right next door to the new Memorial School. And when they started construction of that, I was told that, and I knew they had bought the property dumping onto Morgan Boulevard, and I was told that that property was explicitly for bus traffic alone. So that was originally what it was intended for. In the afternoons when the school is laid out, or in the mornings when it's starting, I can tell you that my driveway has traffic backed up to my driveway all the way to 13th Street. And it's not just because of the crosswalk, it's backed up to 13th Street, particularly when it's, when they're laying out. I don't know if the traffic study that was done took into account what it was seven years ago, that's how long I've been living there, but I can tell you there's a marked difference in, in the amount of traffic and the amount of traffic problems on that street, Rio Honda Road, since then. There's backing up, and I would advise that somebody take into consideration some sort of traffic control, speed bumps or something along that area, because it's still a flightpath in the afternoons and at night for guys that wanna run their hot runs. And I know it's just gonna take one kid to get killed right there for something to happen. Am I done here? I'm just getting more...
You can finish your statement.
I'll sit down and stand up again if I need to. I'm not gonna talk about the sewer system, because I know the issues there. My main issue is, I think it's an awesome idea that you guys are looking at using Morgan Boulevard, Mr. Topia, and using that for major ingress egress. I do think you need to expand the entrance to at least three lanes, because it's gonna bottleneck in there, just like you guys have talked about. You can see what's gonna happen. I was a general contractor for 30 years, I put in gated communities in Dallas during that time, and I know if you don't plan for the ingress egress, you're gonna have major issues, and the whole neighborhood will. So that circulation includes not just this school here and Memorial, it includes Harlingen High School, Long Elementary, Beans Elementary, these two schools, so that area is serviced by the same infrastructure. So you gotta take into account all that area that's gonna be flowing at the same time. But I think it's real important that we address this now, and don't wait until it's too late, because as some of you have commented, when it's too late, that's when the shop starts, and it gets real expensive to tear it out and do over. I think I'm done. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for against society?
Jerry, so I'm Doc, I'm a real estate agent, I represent people that have property in that general area. Twenty, you keep talking about 21st Street. What you talk, 21st Street is from the Vincent down to the barricade. From there, it's HCSD's private drive. Like I said, nobody uses it except them. That barricade should be open, 21st Street should be opened and widened and developed all the way to Vincent. It's already a major street from Vincent to the Loop. You talk about that area, if you go over and look, nice big street. If people, the engineer said that nobody uses, he didn't put it through, he said everybody uses Rio Honda Road. Well, if you had Vincent open from Vincent down to the school, then people could, would be using Vincent. I mean, as far as having school there, I don't know why they had to do them right together, and I'm not in that kind of business, and knowing the answer. I appreciate that y'all were taking time to really figure out this traffic thing, because 21st Street's a bottleneck, and you're beginning to realize the unintended consequences. So that's all I want to say about that, except that the Harlingen schools use so much of an out-of-town architects, that they finally made the guy open an office in Harlingen, so people complain about that. And now you go to a traffic place, you gotta go to Weston Co. How you ever expect an engineer or architect or anything else to develop a business in Harlingen if you go out down the bike or buy everything you need?
I have a question for the school people. This, in yellow, this north-south here, that's, we've been calling 21st Street?
Yes, sir.
Is that school, is that school property?
No, that's city property.
That street is city street?
City street. When we subdivided, because of your thorough plan, we're required to donate anything to right-of-way and to construct a street to city standards, and then at the end, dedicate it, dedicate it all to the city.
Okay, and then the entrance off of Rio Honda Road, is that a two-lane entrance? Is it, are there extra wide street there, so that people can turn left and right?
For 21st, it's Rio Honda heading south?
Yeah.
It's a two-lane, one lane in and one lane out.
Seems to me that that should open up to make it easier for left and rights.
No, we're talking about 21, Rio. Your question's Rio Honda or 21st?
This yellow 21st, where it hits Rio. Yeah, it should, it should be three or four lane, to allow people to come, easy to come in and exit, because you're gonna plug up traffic behind you with two schools, even though they're staggered.
That's why we built it according to city standards.
I understand.
But it was all dedicated to the city.
Thank you.
Again, Jerry Moore, 719 Town Lane. Yes, I live just to the west of that area, and I travel up and down Rio Honda routinely, as well as the other neighbors that are there, that see the congestion and the traffic. If you've been there long enough, you've known that the, ever since this was proposed, because this was gonna happen, I'm fully convinced that Vincent Avenue needs to be expanded, that your traffic probably will not materialize, because most of those residents don't live on the north side of the street there. But anyhow, let me just get to the areas that I'm concerned about. As I drive up and down Rio Honda, and I wish all of you did the same, right there where the yellow line is for the entrance, pay attention to your AM radio broadcast and how much interference you're receiving from the power lines and broadband and the, it's at a dangerous level right now. My suggestion is that the city needs to review all of the power line distribution networks that are in front of and around the schools, and bury and eliminate all that you can. It's only a matter of time before somebody is killed from a power line that's knocked over from one of our wrecks or whatever that is gonna occur from all over. Take a look at the power lines. We got a hurricane season coming, we know what's gonna happen when 90 mile an hour winds hit those lines. They're way overloaded now, and we can only imagine running schools. So anyhow, the cell tower that's proposed and is in place right now, again, I've got literally boxes of FCC documents of studies, concerns, of health effects on our children, and not just children, residents living in the area. Somebody needs to take a very close look at the dangers that's coming with all of the iPads. The units that you're using right now are extremely high levels of radiation. I work with this stuff every day. I'll move on. Schools and games, you gotta, I notice you have a stadium.
How much more do you have?
Just, just a couple more. Okay, the second, the most important thing that I can see right now that has not been addressed is all of the children that are walking along Rio Honda, and Commissioner Steele, I know you've seen them, on backpacks, three or four wide, and they're not paying attention, and they're just kids. But it is tasked on all the residents driving through there that have to be on the lookout for them. They did not accommodate for the people that live on Rio Honda, they tried to put the sidewalks, but they're totally inadequate for now, and it's only gonna get worse with the school, with the med school. Also, the landlords for the property on the north side there, I witnessed less than two weeks ago, a helicopter spraying the field of crops, and I think that this absolutely outrages, that the city tolerates any crop dusting inside the city limit. It is absurd, and I have filed a complaint, and I expect the city commission to do something about it. Again, you know, we're trying to grow the city, we're not trying to grow crops. Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for against society?
I'm Seth Oger Jr., after we threw an NSG for the project, I do wanna mention a couple things. In the 80s, when I started in the Harlingen Police Department, we used to have a Traffic Safety Council. Chief Witten is here in the audience, and, you know, I would expect that the chief police would have some input into the traffic patterns, because we would have our own traffic councils, we would have our own studies, and we even had a board called the Traffic Safety Council. This is a matter that happens all over the city. I can tell you that a couple days ago, I went down Tash Street, and I made a quick U-turn, and avoided the, avoided the traffic. It occurs on Ranger Road, it occurs at Crockett School, it occurs at Benham Island. This is a common problem, there's nothing new about what's being brought up. You know, I would have hoped that next time that we start building schools on Morgan Boulevard, and maybe on Ed Carey, where the traffic is a whole lot of, the streets are a whole lot wider and easier flow of traffic. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for against society?
I'm very, very short, sir. I just like to comment on the student load that referred to just a minute ago. There is an issue with the number of students walking up and down that street. I office in the front room of my house, so I'm watching it nearly every day, I'm watching kids walking up and down. Sometimes they're walking three or four abreast in the street, okay, disregarding the sidewalks. So when you add another 250, 550, however many kids end up being there for four or five years from now, that you guys really need to play with the idea of controlling that issue somehow, because it's just gonna take one kid to make an impact that you'll never forget.
I have something to pick up and say. You is allowed, so I guess I'm allowed. Age before beauty, but that's okay. Okay, you know, one thing that I did notice myself on that airplane that's spraying out there in that area, that they're not spraying suntan lotion, they're spraying poison. And we're not trying to grow crops, we're trying to grow citizens, and we're gonna have that school there be sprayed with poison, not suntan lotion. Thank you.
Then yeah, one more comment. I'd like to have the, the parking lot addressed, I think it says parents, the parent, parental parking lot right there. That particular parking lot is a pretty good-sized parking lot, so there's gotta be a lot of cars gonna be going in and out of that particular parking lot, and they have no way other than going up 21st Street and back out to the north there. I'd like to have them comment about the type of traffic that's gonna be in that parking lot.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for against society?
Yeah, I have a question.
Let me, let me close the hearing, then you can have some more questions. Then I'm gonna close the public hearing.
For the gentleman from the traffic council company. How many vehicles during a school day currently use that area? If this new school's gonna generate 500 vehicles throughout the day, what's the current school, what does it generate?
I don't have the exact number. This, this, this school, I think it's 700, 750, 750. So it's approximately 600 vehicles or so, I think. I don't have the actual number with me, I do, I did the study, but I don't have that number.
Okay, so, so let's say it's 700 vehicles, and then another, so there'll be 1,200 vehicles throughout the day here. Thank you.
City attorney, you gonna read the caption?
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to the city of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District, Mayor Oscar Topia, to allow a school of health professions, a single-family residential Harlingen district located at the corner of Rio Honda Road and 21st Street, wearing legal description on Block 2, HCSD Middle School, under 5 subdivision subject 2, 1, compliance with all pertinent city ordinances, codes and standards, 2, supplemental approval of a building permit application, building plans from official plan review, 3, providing and maintaining parking at a rate of one parking space for every three students, plus one parking space for each classroom, laboratory, or instructional area, 4, approval of a landscaping plan which includes 10% of the property's landscape, and a minimum of two-inch kelp or trees at a, at a rate of one tree for every 600 square feet or required landscaping, and 5, leaving the north access open to the public during school hours, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the public.
I missed one little step here, as far as going to item B, consider take action to approve adopted ordinance on first reading for the above-mentioned specific use permit. Can you read it again?
Do we have, why don't we put our comments in here?
So, don't worry, you can make some comments, or...
The way I look at the entire project, I don't look at it just as the school district has this encapsulated project that's going on there. If funds were not a factor for either entity, it's obvious that we would extend 21st Street all the way to Loop 499. And to me, the least we should do is require that the street that now goes, or that's planned to go from 21st Street over to Morgan Boulevard, be either equivalent or almost equivalent to 21st Street, that we have a dedicated right-of-way that goes all the way out there, that provides a loop for an alternative way to come into the property. the property and an alternative way to go out of the property that's not Riojondo Road. And I think that you'll find that people will change their patterns, or the, even the architect may find a better way to bring people in and out. And I would suggest that if the school district's going to close off the entrance to the school, they would close it off at their parking lot that would go out onto this, whatever it is, new street we'll call it, that would be the street that goes from Twenty First over to Morgan. That's, that's what I would think you would do at a minimum. The second thing would be if we could figure out how to get Twenty First Street to go through, because maybe right now, that's not going to be a big item, but is all of the excess land you see to the north that's open there, you've got a school there, that's eventually going to develop. That's, we've seen more development probably in that area in terms of houses, or equivalent as we have out on the west side. That's the one area that's, that's growing. So I don't know how, I want to accommodate the school district by letting them move forward because apparently time is an issue on them to, to get going. But I'd like to put some sort of condition on it that we either negotiate how we're going to deal with that street going across there and possibly Twenty First Street going forward. We have to figure out some way to keep that negotiation process or working with them. I think we've got a good dialogue started, but since they seem to be in such a hurry to get going.
Is it possible that part of the SUP that we stipulate that in the next five years or, I mean, because they're talking about, number one, they're going to do this gradual two hundred and fifty, then at one twenty-five, one twenty-five, one twenty-five, gives us opportunity, I know both of us are strapped. And then the other question that none of us have addressed is, are we going to require that traffic signal at Thirteenth and Rojondo? Because that's, now's the time to do that. That's part of that future thinking forward because as traffic builds up, four-way stops just don't work. Who's, you know, who's on first and who's on seventh?
Well, I think the city has a study that has indicated that the four-way, I mean, that the traffic light is not warranted. Is that right?
That's correct.
And if you have, if you alleviate, you know, I can see that the traffic that backs up for this, say, thirty-five or thirty-minute to one-hour period, you've got a little congestion there at Thirteenth and Rojondo Road. But if you're the residents that live there and have to wait on that light every day, all day, twelve months a year, not just the nine months of the year that the school is in session, because most of the time, you're going to be sitting at a traffic light if you're headed south on Thirteenth Street, wondering whose idea it was to put a light here, because there's going to be no traffic. You're going to be sitting there by yourself. I mean, I, I understand that maybe in the future, the traffic signal, but I'm more concerned about providing an alternative way in and out to this giant campus that we have here, other than this one way in and one way out.
If we don't bring it up now, that's, that's why I brought it up, because we need to use this discussion.
Well, the interesting thing with this, with this item here, I mean, we as the elected body, in this case, it's going to be you. I don't have a vote in this item at this point, but there can be some conditions placed on there. I mean, obviously, we've had, we have a long track record of partnership with the school district, and that's what we want to continue. But as stated by Commissioner Newhorn, we really have to be sure that we're taking care of our future needs, not just for the school district, but for the entire community affected by this new development. Great development, we just need to make sure we take good steps right now to ensure the future infrastructure needs. So you can put a condition within this, this item as stated by Commissioner Newhorn. As far as the timeline for if we entertain the extension of Twenty First Street, I know the city is also strapped for money, but that's, that's step two. First step is to do the right thing.
Correct.
And if that is your, your intention is to extend Twenty First Street, maybe we could work with staff between now and the second reading where we can establish some timeline.
I mean, all of this is going to occur...
Later than sooner, but sooner than later.
Primarily in the, you know, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen fiscal year for the school district and for us. I mean, there's time to, it's not like we have to pay for this before August the first. There's time to figure out what the alternatives are to be able to pay for it. I don't want to, I don't want to shortchange ourselves by putting some stopgap thing together where we don't have a street that's the right width. And because it happens to just perfectly fit into our budget, that's the way we're going to do it. I'd rather do the right thing and then figure out how to pay for it.
I agree with you. That's, that's why I brought up that twenty-eight feet of that cross street, that east-west cross street. It, it needs to give...
Well, it may not need to be, I don't know whether, I'm not an engineer, I don't know whether it needs to be the same width as the Twenty First Street extension that was put in, but it needs to be almost that big, because I think that it, that, that provides a great way out onto Morgan Boulevard, which has no traffic on it. And I think that people will gravitate towards using that.
Well, now to them, just zoom out. I mean, right now, we're just looking at this little spot, but if we zoom out, there, there are no other east-west cross streets between Rojondo Road and Vinsen.
Right. I mean, too often in the past, to me, we've looked at just this single project, we let them put it anywhere they need to put it, and it blocks the thoroughfare that would have gone all the way through. So we've got an opportunity to make Twenty First go all the way through, and we've got an opportunity to get out to Morgan, and I'd like to figure out some way that we could put a condition on this, that we continue to work with them to solve that problem, and I don't know exactly how you do that.
I think we need to work together with the school district to get, make solutions on this.
One thing that I could suggest to you to do is, if one of you want to make a motion that we, we can approve this on first reading with these conditions, making it a broad enough initial reading so that between now and maybe the second reading, you confident courage to get with...
We, we have, as a matter of fact, yesterday, staff attended a facilities committee, meeting, and we did advise them that, that there was some concerns by the commission on the extension of Twenty First Street. You know, we probably have a head start if, now that we have now the warrant study that says that a street light is not warranted, that money can be kind of contributed to the Twenty First Street extensions of...
Can we wait for the next meeting to then...
Can I go ahead and make that motion then? Make a motion that...
Let me ask, let me ask... How are we going to condition it?
Let me ask this one question of staff. I mean, would that give adequate time for y'all to coordinate with the school district, or is this something that we might want to table right now?
Well, I think we, for the sake of their timeline, they, they want to move forward with the SUP, and I think they have some tight deadlines that they want to meet. I would recommend that we move forward and then, I think we probably can go back and try to negotiate.
You're confident that we can get that done between...
Well, it's going to be tight for us, but we can go back and try to get it done soon.
So we would put a condition on there that we would approve this, this is the first reading, with the condition that the staff and the school district work together to try to resolve this issue of the east-west road and the extension of Twenty First Street, come to some sort of a plan on those streets?
To incorporate those two.
You just made the motion.
Is that your motion?
So move.
I don't know. Do you think we can save the pace for the next meeting?
Well, I think we need, what we need to do is move forward. We need to start this step now so that we get the clock rolling. They've got a timeline there trying to meet to get a school open, so we can get this first step out of the way, and between this step and the second step, we try to work our differences out.
If I do it this way, we can buy some time, they can get started, and we can all come to the table. I think up to this point, what I understand, we, because I believe I've been calling almost every day going, where are we, where are we? I think we've, we've come a long way in about ten days. So do you want to, do we need to repeat your motion? I think you've stated it as clearly as it can get.
Okay, she's got it.
May I just go?
And I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposing side? Motion passes with the stipulated conditions. Does the mayor come back in Friday?
If you want to, you want to jump in thirteen, you can jump in thirteen.
We're going to go to item number thirteen. Consider take action to authorize the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District to assign six full-time, uniformed Harlingen police officers to the function as school resource officers at the respective high school campuses during the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen school calendar year. HCISD has elected the mayor, may elect to hire additional peace officers, police officers on overtime should the need arise.
Good evening, Mayor Portman, commissioners. Actually, that, our item is just that we'd like to request permission for this body to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute an interlocal agreement with the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District. For this particular agreement, they're asking for six full-time, on-duty, uniformed Harlingen police officers. In the current MOU that we're operating under and for many, many years previous, the MOU has actually afforded them two on-duty, uniformed Harlingen police officers, and they have the option to hire as many others as they want on an, on an off-duty, overtime capacity. And collectively, we both realize that there's benefits to both and shortcomings to both. At, at the, as the police department, we've always been cautious in allowing that many resources to six, for example. Like I mentioned, currently, we do two. And we've been working on this issue, and collectively, we arrived at what we consider a solution, insofar as in this MOU, they've actually agreed to fund in its, in their entirety, these six positions, salaries, benefits, and the outfitting of the additional police cars. Certainly, it's not on this agenda, I don't, it's not on this agenda, but our rationale in collectively, I just want to put it out there, is that since they're actually agreeing to fund these six, we're hoping to hire an additional four because it will have absolutely no effect on the general fund. But having said that, we actually will largely support this, and there's some members of the, of the school, of the school district here as well, if there's any questions.
Couple of questions. You just, I get, it's also for the benefit of the rest of the commission.
Sure.
Pretty familiar that whole process, but the, that, the number of six officers that disagreeing will cover, that's basically the average of what you had been assigning when they had the hiring of the additional overtime, or what was the average of you?
Yeah, well, actually, they were hiring four, and they, as I understand it, they want two for each high school and two for the ninth grade academy. They had been hiring two per school. One was, one was a Harlingen on-duty resource, and the other officer was off-duty, so it actually didn't impact the service that we were providing in a non-duty capacity. And this time, they want six, which we agreed, you know, with all the recent events, it's a really good idea, and since they're providing the funding, we think it's a win-win, and hopefully, we can move forward with that other item at a later date.
Sure.
For the class of the school district, again, we do have currently, we, two police officers, you know, at, at the high schools and two at South, and the additional two will be for the new ninth grade academy that we're, that we're hoping to open in August twenty thirteen. And the chief is right, we have, you know, one full-time, and then we'll use one additional officer, pretty much, you know, forty hours a week, but it wasn't a full-time officer, but we'll pay for that officer.
And the agreement's still going to be covering the same reimbursement of the associated costs, equipment costs?
Yes, the benefits and the vehicle costs, we would incorporate that into our budget. We're estimating about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for all six officers.
So this is going to change. Before, we were providing two, and now we're going to provide six, but they're going to pay for the whole...
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
So we can understand, if you're, you're going to be reducing your expenses because right now, you've been supplementing...
Right.
Two of those officers.
Yeah, we've actually been paying a hundred percent of the, of the cost for those officers that, that are at the high schools.
Right. They're paying for the two, they just want to pay for the six, which is why I want to ask for the four.
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So what happens if, if they don't need all six next year?
Well, I was going to say that, and that's why I'm glad they're here. They've actually had those other MOUs in place for, I want to say about twelve years. And there is a provision in the law.
That is also not a part of this item, as far as any additional staffing for the PD side right now?
No, 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 no. That's not what my question is. Okay. We're, we're going to, we're going to take six of our officers, and, and they're going to be reassigned to the school district, still under your jurisdiction, but they, they're assigned to the school district, so the school district's reimbursing us for the cost of the six.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so, my question is, is...
I know where you're going.
You know where I'm going?
Yeah. As a point of clarification, I think what the, what the chief is saying is that we're going to be assigning six police officers, so that means that at some point in the future, we're going to have to come back to the commission so that we can get those officers back, otherwise, we're going to be decreasing the police force by that amount.
That's what my question...
Having said that, once, once the, we have them on board, and I think the, we have an MOU, and we've had that MOU for about twelve years, where they had the two officers, so we, we're hoping that that's a long-term MOU that will be here for a while. But having said that, if at any point in time, they decide, decide not to move forward with the MOU, then there is a process in place where we would eliminate those, those positions.
We'll have an RIF.
Yes.
That's where I was going. We, we understand we may have an RIF if, if for some reason, this doesn't work out next year or the following year.
Right. Actually, section one forty-three of the law allows just for that. If, for any reason, there's a reduction in fund, that you can reduce like the, you know, last in, first out kind of...
Okay.
And if approved, we would use all six officers next year.
I'm confident of that, I'm just, I have to ask the question.
So, so this, so we will be removing officers from duty, from street duty, but your plan is then to hire to replace, so there is no reduction in the police force patrolling the streets and taking care of the citizens?
Exactly, yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Commissioner, come on, I'm not going to stand up. I have a question on your board package. You're putting the overtime rate at thirty bucks an hour, and most of the officers in your board package, I saw that, in, most of the officers are making anywhere from forty to fifty dollars an hour plus benefits. I'm wondering if the school is fully reimbursing for OT purposes only, not this six officers, but what they need, if they reimburse the total amount, because that, that does include a larger amount of money.
You guys are, actually. They are.
Chief? The captain who's making forty-five bucks an hour?
Well, I don't actually think he's going anymore, but it's a different issue.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd make the motion to authorize the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with the Harlingen CISD to assign the six full-time, uniformed Harlingen police officers to function as school resource officers in the high school campuses during the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year.
Your second?
Second.
There's a, your motion is second?
We need to wait for Mr. Mesmer? We've got a quorum?
Still have a quorum. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed, same side? Thank you.
Thank you.
I realize now that I did this all wrong, I should have saved these two items for the end, and I could have come home. Let me take, let's take item fifteen with the first, Rodell is patiently waiting out there as well. Item fifteen is consider and take action to approve a resolution pending the Economic Development Corporation, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen fiscal year budget.
Good afternoon, Mayor Civic Commissioners. I'm Lutz, I'm with Harlingen Economic Development Corporation. When we started our budget process, my first week on the job, about seven, eight months ago, one of the things that we said is that, well, we'll go through this budget, after about six months in the mid-year of the budget, we're going to look at, at our budget again and make some adjustments if needed. Some of the adjustments are what we're looking at today. Overall, what we're looking at, and we've done some things in the last six months that have impacted the, the budget in a significant manner. One of them is on the revenue side, we have increased the, the revenues by basically one point four million dollars. A lot of it has to do with the sale of the United Healthcare Services building that we had, all those settings have, and Sunshine Strip. We sold that building and have designated two million of the two point two million dollars that we received from that sale back into, actually, two point three million dollars, back into a reserve account for the rainy day, if you will. In addition to that, we looked at our, our rent revenues from not only United Healthcare, so we had to adjust those and, and eliminate those because now we don't have that building. But we looked at, at, at revenues from other sources as well and have adjusted those revenues. So the bottom line is that we have increased our, our revenues and thus have decreased the, the transfer of money from the fund balance as well. On the expense side, we looked at salaries and employee benefits because there's a position there that I hadn't filled and don't plan on filling the rest of the year, that was vacated at the end of December, so there's about a hundred thousand dollar savings there. And then, other than that, we had an increase in the marketing budget that we talked And then, other than that, we had an increase in the marketing budget that we talked about at several different meetings, and most of that is in advertising and in trying to bring in some more businesses. And then there's also a little bit, an adjustment for professional legal fees, because what we were looking at, and what we're at today, we realized that we're going to be spending a little bit more because we've got a lot of things going on right now. The bottom line on the operations is that we've increased our budget by 1,488 dollars. It's mostly a wash. On the contract side, with consultants, we have added 60,000 dollars, and we talked about this back in September, but we added 60,000 dollars for consultants to pay for, our consultants in Washington DC. And we have also adjusted VIDA and Tech Prep for different accounting reasons. VIDA, we had budgeted 225,000, 25,000 of it in from a previous year, but we actually paid it the previous year, so we eliminated that. The 18,750 dollars that is an increase for Tech Prep, or actually, it's RGP LEED, was actually a 2009 expense that wasn't caught until just recently. And living up to our obligations, we said we're going to pay that. And so, that's the budget at the moment there. So on the contract side, we've got 53,000 dollar increase. And then on the project side, the project side, we were looking at spending 9.5 million dollars, rounding it off. And in reality, we're going to spend about 8.9 million dollars, so that's a 600,000 dollar savings that we're looking at in our budget. A lot of that, 400,000 dollars of that 600, came from renegotiating contracts with United Healthcare and also with Cardone Industries. So we pushed back some of the, the payments on their performance, if you will, payments by ADC another fiscal year. The bottom line is that we've got more money in the bank that is in reserve for a rainy day, and our fund balances is, is actually, our cash balance has actually grown quite a bit, and we're still within very fiscally responsible in terms of operations, cutting back on unnecessary items, not filling positions, that type of thing. Any questions?
Nobody has any questions? Is there a motion to approve the resolution pending the ADC budget? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Okay, we'll go then to item 12, which is a public hearing to consider an appeal to the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission denying a specific use permit to allow portable building to be used for the sale of fireworks during the fireworks season, located at 24218 FM 3195, Baricalee construction 3.63 acres out of Trenton, ELL Adams, serving 140 applicant Mr. G's Fireworks. Is the staff agreement that we go into executive session?
They were, they were...
Let me just give you some, some background information here. This is the, the subject site that's out near Stewart Place Road, and this is a, we did a public hearing notice to that surrounding area, and... There was an ordinance in 2009, this area was annexed into the city, and the fireworks stand existed out there, and it was grandfathered in because the city doesn't allow fireworks stands. And there was a little Colici Drive, which you can see there, and a piece of property in there that was a portable fireworks stand. This, the current applicant, Mr. Gonzalez, has applied for a use permit because he took over the lease from the previous operator of the fireworks stand that had it back in 2009. And this is his little site plan drawing that, that shows how it was set up and proposed to be set up. This is the original drawing that came in in 2009, when the previous operator applied for their use permit. It's the same Colici Drive there, and the portable stand was apparently close to that location. Nobody's ever been able to pin down, you know, exactly where it was back then, and that was the location that, that was approved. There was an address that was listed in the ordinance, which is 24218, and there's two pieces of property there, one on the front, and then the bigger area that's in the, in the back. And you can see that on, on the drawing there. You see Stewart Place Road there. This is a Google map, looking down, aerial view, where the yellow line is there, kind of in line with the essence Stewart Place. You can see the little Colici Road that goes in. The outline of the yellow is, is the bigger piece of property. And at that time, back in 2009, the lady that owned all that property there, she's the one that made the lease or the deal with the operator that was, was there at the time. She's since become very elderly and gone into a nursing home, and now, I guess, it's her son, her sons, that are in charge of both of these parcels here. And so, there's been some confusion with regard to who's in charge of the properties and leases, et cetera. But the bottom line is that the current applicant, Mr. Gonzalez, did make a lease with the person that's in charge of that area there where the Colici River goes in. And he set up shop there to operate, and then the city sent letters informing that he, that he needed a lease use permit. And so that's the reason that this, this is really here tonight. And there has been several different interpretations from the previous operator and from the current applicant on how the ordinance was supposed to apply. And when you read it, you'll see that it names, the names of businesses in 2009, and other sections, it just names locations for fireworks. So I think what really needs to be sorted out is how the ordinance should apply, and if there is some confusion there, maybe we need to change or modify the ordinance. And I think the first thing you probably need to do is you have a couple of choices. One, you can open up the public hearing, and you can hear from the applicant, and you can hear from the people that are here, that have been notified by the public hearing notice, so you can get the, the information in their side of the story. Or if you want to find out the information about the ordinance from a legal perspective from Mr. Billby, and we also have Mr. Alan Azuna here tonight that's helped us with legal matters from the city before, and, and they've taken a look at this ordinance, and they're in a position to, to give you legal advice if you want to go into executive session. So whatever order you want to do that, and that would be my recommendation from, from the staff, and I think that the city manager agrees with that. Do you have any final questions? Unless anybody's got any questions for Ken? Okay. Let's go ahead and do the public hearing, so we hear, or whoever, and then we'll consult with the, with the attorneys. Okay. So I'm going to add a, which is public hearing, I'm going to do a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak for or against the, the appeal, the denial of the specific use permit?
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is Robert Gerda. I am here on behalf of Mr. G's Fireworks. They're located in 2001 East Business Highway 77 in San Benito, Texas, 785, 78586. The gentleman from the Planning and Zoning Commission hit on some issues, and as the members of the commission may or may not know, this particular parcel of land is involved in the area that was annexed, then de-anexed, and possibly re-anexed again. That is, I guess, set up for interpretation. However, what is not up for interpretation is the fact that in 2009, this commission passed an ordinance, ordinance 09-31, which did grandfather certain fireworks stands located in this parcel of land to allow them to continue their businesses after the city has come on and annexed it. Now, the gentleman from the Planning and Zoning Commission is right that Mr. Gonzalez's predecessors in interest did receive the grandfathering in and were allowed onto that piece of, of property. And I'll point out to the commissioners that if you notice where the Colici Road is, basically in the middle of that very large rectangle, the area above it, that kind of looks like a panhandle, that's where the, the stand is located, that's where the stand has always been located, and that's where the stand, hopefully, with the permission of the city commission, will be allowed to be located again and continue in operation. The address for that piece of parcel of land is 24206 FM 3195. The parcel that's in the encapsulated area, that is 24218 FM 3195 Stewart Place Road. The issue here is what was considered to be the operative area that was going to be grandfathered in. The reason why that address, 24218, is, is listed is because that is where the gentleman at the time was receiving the payments from Mr. Gonzalez's predecessors in interest to lease the land and to allow them to operate the fireworks stand. But in actuality, the fireworks stand has and always has been included on that panhandle, and that address of the panhandle is 24206. What was provided to the commissioners, hopefully before the meeting, and if you don't have a copy, I'll be more than willing to provide to you, is a letter from the owner of that parcel of land, Ms. Beatriz Martinez, I'm sorry, Ms. Delia Rios. I'm sorry, Ms. Beatriz Martinez. And if you notice the last paragraph, she, you know, says that the location that was supposed to have been grandfathered in was 24206, that little panhandle area right there. And she says, it has never been 24218, the fireworks were always supposed to have been sold at that area, and she asks that Mr. G's be allowed to continue to sell fireworks at that area as well, so that she can receive lease payments, which, as she indicates in the letter, is clearly needed income for an elderly and infirm lady. All Mr. G's would like to do is continue the business that this commission clearly allowed back in 2009 for them to do. As the commission also knows, selling fireworks, it's a very limited timeframe, you only have two times a year to do it. Mr. Gonzalez and his employees would like to continue to pursue their living, and that is why they're asking the commission to allow them to continue with the intended grandfathering of this area and allow them to sell fireworks at that stand. And we ask that the appeal of the denial from the Planning and Zoning Commission be granted by this commission. And we thank you for your time.
When was the last time that fireworks were sold at this site?
Fireworks were sold on that site, actually, Commissioner Mesmer, back in December of 2012, on through January 1st.
Okay, by the present applicant or the previous applicant?
By the present applicant. And I'm sure Mr. Billby will be able to fill you in as to the reasons why, as well.
All right. Anybody have any, any questions for the representative of Mr. G? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this, this item?
285, I am for it. It was grandfathered in in 2009. There hasn't been any problem before. And what would be 4th of July without fireworks? Why should we go to McDonald's buying mother hen? That's cutting somebody's throat that's relying on it, and the old lady needs her rent money.
So anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this item? Okay, hearing done, I'll, I'll do the public hearing and go to item. I'm going to go ahead and call the item, but if we want to go into executive session, we can also do that. Consider and take action to approve or disapprove the appeal to the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the above-mentioned specific use permit. And approve, take action to approve, and adopt an ordinance, ordinance on first reading. It will take a four-fifth vote of the commission to sustain the appeal. So there have to be four, four commissioners who vote in favor. Do you all want to consult with the attorneys? If so, we need a motion to...
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session...
Second.
To consult the attorneys.
Okay. Then, there's a motion to second, go into executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Commissioner, ladies and gentlemen, the commission will move into the back room with their attorneys to consult with their attorneys on this issue. Okay, do we, do we need to, do we need to, do we need to vote to approve or disapprove the appeal first, and then you read the caption of an ordinance, and then we vote on the ordinance if it's, if it says, consider and take action to approve or disapprove the appeal?
I don't think we have an ordinance. I think we...
No, there's an ordinance, sir.
Is there an ordinance?
Yep. Well, we're out of executive session at whatever time we walk down, 8:30, 30:30? Okay, what we need is a motion to approve, either a motion to approve the appeal, which means it was, we would sustain the appeal, or we need a motion to deny the appeal.
Mayor, also, if you do approve the denial, you would want to make sure that the correct address is reflected in the ordinance.
That's a technical correction.
Correct. Well, okay, but let's get here on the terminology. We need to, we need to...
I'd move that we deny the appeal, or, which, which is...
We'd approve the appeal.
Approve the appeal, but we're denying whatever the PNC did.
We, you're going to grant the, move to grant the appeal...
Grant the appeal.
And overturn the PNC.
Yes, that's my motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have four votes in favor, so the appeal is upheld, and, and grant, it's granted.
And effectively, the, the commission's overridden the PNC's decision because you have four-fifth vote.
Right. Okay, we need to take any other action?
We need to change the address of the ordinance. I move we correct the address of the ordinance to be 24206 FM 3195.
Second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right. Go to item 14, which is consider and take action to accept or reject bids and award the contract for the pavement preservation project under bid 2013-11 to provide tire rubber modified surface seal to approximately 3.45 miles of various roads within the city to extend the life of the street fatal pavements.
I would, and the mayor commissioners, the pavement preservation project uses a tire rubber modified surface seal, which extends the life of the asphalt pavement. On May 14, staff received an opening to bids for the proposed projects. All, the both bids were over budget. Staff recommends that we reject the bids due to insufficient project budget.
Is there a motion to reject the bids?
Okay, you, yeah, I'll make a motion to reject the bids, and then I have questions.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second.
Okay, so you want to reject the bids because they came in as a budget, correct?
Right, correct.
And what is this? Is this the thin coat, or is this a thicker coat?
It's a thin coat.
Is this what we voted about a year ago to do a, an experiment?
A pandemic project, yes, correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Item 16, consider and take action to approve, no, we're going to pass that because the staff's not ready to proceed on that. Board of appointments?
None, Mayor, none.
None.
I have a reappointment. I'm going to be reappointing Kevin Campbell to the zoning board of adjustments as an ordinance.
All right, I have a, an appointment, the appointment of Mark Kroll to the airport advisory board in place of this position held by Carlos Cuellar, Vicky Moore to the airport advisory board in position of Joe Ray Wagner, Ricky Leal, the airport advisory board in place of David C. Garzal, and Julie Isel Perez for the position, Elbiden Fever, who had to resign. Also, I'm going to reappoint Abby Wershaski to the civil service commission, Danny Haney to the civil service commission, George O'Sham to the community development advisory board, Elaine Flores to the community development advisory board, Nestor Martinez to the construction board of adjustments, Bill the Road to the downtown improvement district board, Hector Zamora to the golf course advisory board, Philip Oxford to the parks advisory board, Nick George to the PNC, Nick Consigliere to the PNC, Juan Salas to the senior citizens advisory board...
Okay, item nineteen, close to executive session, personnel matters, section five fifty-one point oh seven four of the Texas Upheaters Act regarding the appointment of interim city attorney in the process of employing a city attorney.
On this motion, we move into executive session to take this matter?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move back to the back room and regarding personnel issue. Okay, we're out of executive session at eight fifty-one. Good item twenty, consider and take action to appoint an interim city attorney. Consider...
Staff is recommending that we name Rick Biobi, our current assistant city attorney, as the interim city attorney. With... We're also recommending a salary of one hundred and ten thousand dollars and a car allowance of three hundred and fifty.
Is there a motion to approve the staff recommendation?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next item is citizen communication out of twenty-one.
Mayor, I think it's most of the city are gone, Jose Rubio, Juan Em Cruz, Juan Tito Va, Arturo Niño, Lidia Lopez, Delia Rios, Robben Martinez, Jose Rubio, and Raymond Reyes.
My name's Raymond Reyes. I live on seven oh six Snack Ticket Drive, and basically, the reason that I came by here is because I'm unfortunately having another type of incident. I requested some information from one of my businesses were included in the downtown assessment fees that I was paying, paying for several years apparently. When I requested the information on some type of record of the amount of payments and how long I had paid, I got a letter back, unfortunately, saying that they had no record of that, which is not the first time that I've run into this. As a matter of fact, one of the old commissioners, Gus, had knew that I had requested several times from this particular organization under the Freedom of Information Act finance request. Well, he finally put me on the board, but when he put me on the board, they somehow or another redistilled all the lines and took my businesses and everything on the other side, other railroad tracks off, so now it's just on this side, on the opposite side of Coolie that's included. So, I'm wondering, the payments that I would go and make for both businesses, what happened to that money? You know, if I'm getting a letter that there was never any payments made when I actually physically, as the owner went and made them to Cheryl, sometimes in cash, sometimes in checks, I believe, that's concerning. So concerning that I'm actually looking to buy property on the side where there is a downtown improvement district because one way or another, I want to find out what happened to those funds because I paid for a certain amount of time. The reason, it's so ironic, the reason that this came up is because one of the businesses apparently doesn't even have a history of being in Harlingen, and it opened up in nineteen seventy-six. So that goes back to accountability. You know, I've been going along, the last time I actually was around along was when an ordinance was passed that I couldn't sell alcohol, even though my business, my father's business was grandfathered in, they still, I mean, the P D went out there and gave tickets. T A B C said that, you know what, they were out of it because they knew something was coming. Fortunately, they switched the ordinance back. I had heartbreak, we filed a lawsuit, but we dropped the lawsuit because I just wanted to prove basically a point. So, I'm hoping I'm going to submit another request for said information, and hopefully these records will be produced because when I had talked to that particular department, they said that they weren't actually required to keep any financial records. That in itself is concerning as well because that organization has been around for many, many years, and I have yet to see any major improvements in the downtown area. So, that's basically why I'm here today, and that's basically why I waited, you know. I had clients that I was going to see, but, oh, well, this took longer than anticipated, but I think it's something that should be looked into because I didn't just pay fifty dollars, I paid for a couple of years. And then to get a letter that I'd never paid at all when I physically went there, what happened to all that money if it's not accounted for? Food for thought, and that's all I have to say. Thank you and have a good week.
All right, thank you. Nobody else left except staff, so meeting is adjourned. Thank you.